All right, so welcome to this evening's June 8th City Council meeting 2021. This meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning certain gatherings such that an in-person meeting of the council is not possible. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend the meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can press or tap to request to speak. Please use either of these options during all communications or the public hearings to request to speak. I will repeat that numerous times over the meeting this tonight, so it should be clear on how to converse with the council during this meeting. In attendance this evening, we have Councilor Pet, Councilor LeBlanc, Councilor Holmgren, Councilor Gilman, Councilor Memhard, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Nolan, and Councilor Cox. Councilor O'Hara will probably be joining us shortly. Also, we have Councilor O'Hara joining us at the moment. Also in attendance this evening, we have our mayor, Mayor Taken. We have our, let's see here, I don't see Frank on the call, but we have our assistant to the C A O, Chris Segrenza. We have our CFO, John Dunn. We have our superintendent, Mr. Lummis. We have our general counsel, Chip Payson. Let's see who else. We have our school committee chair, Jonathan Pope. And let me check the attendees here and make sure we got everybody. I think that is it for attendees. Did I miss anybody? I don't think we did.
Kathy Clancy is on as an attendee.
And we have a school committee person, Kathy Clancy, as an attendee this evening. So before we get going, I want to announce a couple of things that we do have some severe weather coming through over the next few hours, that if we do lose communications and we lose internet or power, this meeting will be postponed. If we do not have a quorum or we do not have a majority of the city council to participate, if we do come to that situation, we will continue this meeting. Next Tuesday, we have a special council meeting for the budget and we will pick up where we left off. This meeting during that meeting next week. So just to be clear with everybody that the procedural part of this evening's meeting, that we do have a plan in place. And also, I saw last night on social media that the Cape Town surfers, surfer people are going to be joining this meeting. This, that matter will not be taken up tonight. So I just don't want you guys to be on the meeting all night long waiting for us to discuss that. That is going to be referred out to ordinance and administration, which is next Monday at six o'clock. So feel free to join us next Monday at six o'clock. So for the surfer people that you don't have to sit through this meeting and you have the information that we provided. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the first order of business, please?
First order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. During the meeting, the public shall have every opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter will be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks prior relative to disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow any complaints as to individual performance. So if there are anybody willing to, wanting to speak under oral communications, if you're calling on a phone, you can press star nine, and if you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button. So I will bring in our oral communications. Pam, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Pam Steele, 10 Pilots Hill.
Thank you, go ahead.
I would just like to bring up a couple of things that came to my attention recently. The birth rate has gone way down and is projected to go way down. And I'm thinking that you, we need to represent all the citizens, and I'm just afraid because we have so many seniors in our community that are going to need the taxpayer money to help them get through. That has to be considered as well. And that the fact that our median average income is not that high, I'm just really worried that we're not going to be able to afford the maintenance of such a large school. Not opposed to a new school, I think.
Pam, we have that on the agenda this evening?
Oh, sorry, I'm always, I'm still figuring everything out.
That's okay. I just, I just wanted to remind you, that's all.
Okay, that's fine. I don't mind that at all.
All right, I appreciate it. Anything else, Pam?
No, that's about it.
All right, we appreciate it. Let's see, we will be having the public hearing for this later on this evening.
I'll try to hang in there. I don't know.
All right, thank you. I'll see ya.
Thank you.
All right, and we have Mary Ann. Mary Ann, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Steve. Mary Ann Albutboucher, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Mary Ann Albutboucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that recently, the Lanesville Quarry area was granted police detail. And if we're going to give police detail to the quarries, which I think is a great thing, we need to give that same respect to the children in West Gloucester. We need police detail to protect the children on the streets outside West Parish School. Now, we're not talking Webster Street here, so I feel that I can talk about this at oral communication.
Yep.
Went to oral communication, the school committee, last school committee meeting, and I begged. It's been five years. That school opened five years ago. We still have a problem. The school committee received a, a very worrisome video of an almost accident. That was the end of the video. This person happened to get in touch with me, I do not even know her, to show me the video. Why? If our school committee's not going to do it, please, I'm asking my city council, I'm asking the people that represent me, the city, the constituents, the residents. If the school committee is not going to do it, I'm asking all of you to step up and take care of it before we have a child hurt. We know there's a problem. The school committee meet at the meeting even announced and, and realized they do have a problem. And we're going forward with another one. And we still have issues that we haven't dealt with yet. So please, I, I really beg of you to do something for the children, the children of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Believe it or not, I think West Parish was maybe seven, six, seven, maybe eight years ago, just, just so you know, five years.
It opened up in 2016, Steve, five years ago.
Seems, it seems longer.
It's not.
I think, I don't.
That.
All right, anything else, Mary Ann?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, anybody else would like to speak under oral communications? If you are calling in, you can raise your hand. I mean, you can press star nine. And if you are watching on a device, you can raise your hand button. Oral communications, anyone? Going once, twice? All right, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
All right, are there any counselors that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, and I will, I will remove our, Joanne, you want to maybe help me with this one minute? I don't want to close out my email. Our, our council orders were not put into, actually, hold on one second, and I will pull it up. All right, so our council orders on tonight's agenda were mistakenly placed in the applications and petitions heading of the agenda and are not under the council orders and heading. So instead of revising the agenda this evening, I figured I'd pull them off this evening and we can correct that here. So I'm going to pull the council orders off the agenda this evening and put them into their proper position. All right, is there anybody else that would like to remove anything from the agenda? All right, seeing none. So I move to remove the council orders under, from applications and petitions and put them in their proper position under council orders heading, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. And this evening, we have, our roll call starts off with Councilor McCarthy.
Yes.
All right, Councilor Memhard?
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councilor Pet?
Yes.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren?
Yes.
And Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
So moved.
All right.
Sorry.
And moved, moved by Councilor Memhard and seconded by Councilor Gilman.
Thank you.
Closing up. All right, roll call vote, Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Councilor Pet?
Yes.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren?
Yes.
And Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Motion passes to accept the amended consent agenda on a roll call vote, nine in favor, zero opposed. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of June 3rd.
Thank you. I will defer this to our Budget Finance Chair, Councilor Cox.
I presented a consent agenda. If anybody has any questions or wants to pull anything, please do so now. Seeing none, I move the consent agenda.
Seconded.
All right, the consent agenda, Budget Finance Consent Agenda has been moved by Councilor Cox, seconded by Councilor Memhard. Any council discussion? Councilor Cox, anything? Okay. Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilor Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councilor Pet?
Yes.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren?
Yes.
And Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Motion to accept the Budget Finance Unanimous Consent Agenda passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The ordinance administration committee did not meet due to the holidays, so it would be the committee report of the Complaint and Development Committee on June 2nd.
All right, then I will defer this to our Planning and Development Chair, Councilor Gilman.
There are no items to be brought forward, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The first scheduled public hearing, public hearing 2021-18, the public hearing on the FY 22 proposed budget.
All right, so just to give a little insight here, this is the budget, I mean, this is the public hearing for the FY 2022 proposed budget. So if anybody would like to speak on this, this is a public hearing this evening. So I will open the public hearing and I will ask if there was anybody that would like to speak in favor or in opposition. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine, or if you are watching on a device or a laptop or any phone, there is a raise hand button to request to speak. This is for our FY 2022 proposed budget, public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak in opposition or in favor, just raise your hand and we'll just go right, right through everybody. All right, we have our first person. Olympia, can you have your name and address for the record, please?
Olympia Palazola, 57 Western Avenue, Gloucester, Mass.
Thank you, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions regarding what I read in the newspaper about the budget. I don't know much about it, didn't read, read the budget or anything, but my question was, it sounds like, it sounds like the, the budget is more, I don't know if it's 1.9 million more. And then they're also raising our water rate separately, our sewer rates separately, and I'm sure our taxes are going up considerably to, to fund the school. So why, why is it put in there separately? Is it, are those items that can't be in the budget that way? And because there's an override, we have no idea what our taxes can go up according to the, according to the, the proposed budget. So I'm confused about that part of it, and maybe you can help me out with understanding why they're put in the paper that way. Thank you.
All right, Olympia, thank you. We'll get to our counselor questions shortly and we'll pass those for you. All right, anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition or have a question about our FY 22 budget? You can raise your hand. We have our chairman, Jonathan Pope. Jonathan?
Thank you, Council President. I'm, my name's Jonathan Pope. I'm the, I live at 16 Marble Street in Gloucester. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the city administration, mainly John Dunn and, and the rest of the administration, the city council, Budget and Finance Chairperson, Melissa Cox, and the other members, Scott Memhard and John McCarthy, this, as well as the superintendent and our, the school's CFO, Gary Frisch. This, in my 20 years of presenting budgets to the city, has been the smoothest and the most collaborative process that I've ever been involved in. And I'd just like to thank everybody. I urge you to pass this budget. It's a good budget and it's responsible, and it will allow us to move the city forward appropriately as well as the schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, does anybody else that would like to speak in favor or opposition have a question? Please raise your hand. All right, seeing none. Do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
All right, do we have any counselor questions? We do have, I don't know if we should refer this to our Budget Finance Chair or our CFO for Olympia's questions. I know she brought up a couple of questions. I think now would be probably the proper time to ask those on why they were, the water and sewer were separately. Can we define why they were separately?
So their enterprise accounts, so that is why they're voted separately. The water and sewer rates are revised annually with the, the budget. Normally, there's always an increase because there's an increase to our costs to run them, but they're just like any other budget, community development, legal, our budget, everything is voted by department. So it's, it's not like, it's anything special. It's just, they're all, all the departments are voted line by line, or not line by line, but department by department.
Okay, thank you.
I, I imagine that John Dunn could probably explain that a lot more technical than I can, but that's, the bottom line is that it, they are their own departments.
Thank you. I think, I think that's enough. She was just asking why they were voted separately, so, but they all get rolled into the budget.
So Council President, if you want, I can go on for about 45 minutes.
About 45 seconds, John. No, if you want to explain that briefly, so Olympia knows why, why they were separately.
No, so, so, you know, Counselor Cox explained it the same way. So there are, you know, we have the general fund and we have enterprise funds. The enterprise funds operate outside of the general fund. There, there is a water enterprise fund and a sewer enterprise fund, and we just kind of, we basically kind of, you know, devolve the rates based on what has to happen within those funds in order to be able to deliver the services.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask the question because Ms. Palazola had asked it, so this was the time to bring it up. All right, do we have any other counselor questions? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and refer this to our Budget Finance Chair, Counselor Cox.
So we have our next budget meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock for any revisits from our review of the budgets. And we always have the revisit meeting after the public hearing, in case there's anything that comes up during public hearing. Tonight, there, there wasn't anything proposed that was, that needed a revisit through the revisit portion of it, but we as a committee have some things that we're going to look into a little bit more. So that will be handled at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. And then there will be a separate public hearing, normally after public hearings, or not, separate meeting to go over the motions. Generally, our practice is to make the motions after the public hearing, but because we still have that additional revisit meeting, we find it inappropriate to go over the motions the same night as the public hearing. So we will see you again next week, Tuesday at six o'clock, for about 45 minutes of making motions.
And you're the best at doing it, so we'll get right through it.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business.
Did you close the public hearing?
I did.
Okay, sorry, I missed that part.
Yeah, I closed it and I referred it to you for an explanation. So next, next Tuesday at June 15th, Counselor Cox stated that we will be going through the motions for this budget. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
His public hearing to, to 2021-19, special city council permit 2021-001, Cross Street number 12, map 50 lot 18, Gloucester zoning ordinance section 2.3.17, conversion to our new multifamily or apartment dwelling, four to six units in the R5 district.
All right, so I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. Please do so now. All right, we have Megan. Megan, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, thank you very much.
One second, before we start, we usually give up to 15 minutes for, in favor, and then we go back and forth. I don't know if you're going to be able, if you want to take the full 15 minutes or what, but we'll usually go back and forth with the, the times.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't think I'll need the full 15 minutes, but thank you very much.
Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Megan Breaker of Klein, Gardner &amp; O'Connor, 96 Middle Street, Gloucester.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. I represent the property owners Catherine Swagger and Joyce McCullough. They came to me originally hoping to just simply sell their property, which they had always believed was a four-family home. They purchased it back in 1999, and it was their understanding at that time it was a four-family. However, after entering into negotiations to sell the property last year, it was made aware to them that the property was never appropriately converted from a three to four family. To give a little bit of a history of the property, March, in March of 1979, a previous owner received relief from the zoning board of appeals for various variances that they needed in order to convert the property and to construct the fourth unit to go from the three to four family. I searched the city council records. I was unable to find whether or not they ever actually did go to the city council, and they also never recorded the decision at the registry of deeds. So fast forward now, my clients had found this information out. At this point, they're seeking just simply to legitimize the property, sort of, they're looking at this as more of a clerical error than anything else. I've been very clear all along this process and continue, want to continue to be very clear tonight. They're not making any changes to the existing property. They're not adding anything new. They're not creating an addition. Nothing's going to change the property. They're simply trying to legitimize its status in order to sell it.
All right. All right, thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you are watching on a device or a laptop or your computer, you can raise your hand. All right, Anna, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mr. LeBlanc. Thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Anna Williams. My mother is sitting next to me. Her name is Philomena Williams. We reside on Cross Street. We have the Abutters property. And at the last hearing we were at with you on May 5th, you discussed a letter that would be drafted from the building inspector regarding the water table, the drain, and the driveway concerns that we've had. Because if that building is zoned as a four-family, which it should have been years ago, those issues will need to be addressed with the parking. So I just wanted to know if that letter was received and what the contents of that letter has.
Okay, yeah. We will try to get that answer for you shortly.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of this application? If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine. If you're watching on a device, your laptop, your phone, there is a raise hand button to request to speak. Please do so now. All right, we have Tracy. Tracy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name and address for the record, please.
Tracy O'Neil, 12 Friends Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if you said the address of the property. If you did, I missed it. That's all.
Okay, I am not, yes, I think it's number 12, right? Is that correct?
Well, Cross Street?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. I just want to be aware of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, anybody else that would like to speak in favor and opposition? Please do so now. All right, we're going to go once, in favor and opposition twice. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are none.
And do we have any counselor questions? All right, so we had our first, Anna had spoke about the letter. I'm not sure of the letter. Megan, do we know anything about a letter from the building department?
There was a letter from the building department, yes. And it was read out loud at the last P and D meeting. I'm just looking, I have it here. The memo was from Bill Sanborn, and he simply stated that, similar to what I said, that the special permit application was, that was before P and D was granted zoning relief back in March of 79. He was unable to verify if the applicant had ever completed the process by going forward with the city council. The improvements described in the zoning decision have been completed to a point. An apartment was added, and some of the parking was constructed, however, not to plan. At the present time, the property is required to have four parking spaces, one for each dwelling new unit per the ordinance, ordinance, excuse me. And that was basically the bulk. He did not speak of the letter. He did not speak to the water table issues that the Philomena's daughter brought up. However, it was also discussed at the previous P and D meeting that although the zoning relief, the previous owner got, required them to pave the parking and to get, and to have enough spaces for six in the back behind the house, that my clients would probably be discussing with the, with their new buyers whether or not to go forward and get an amended relief from the original zoning relief to change the parking from four to six, or to, from six down to four.
Thank you, Megan. Do we have any other counselor questions? Counselor Nolan?
Sorry about that. So does the actual building meet the requirement for parking or not? It sounds like if they, if they have an issue with parking that isn't up to par with what they're looking for right now, that may be an issue. Off-street parking's at a prime. If they have a, if it's legally a three-family, if they don't have enough parking spots, then we need to see an ironclad plan of what the parking spots will be before I could support this to go forward through and not saying that after we, we approve this and then they will come up with a plan for parking. I'd like to make sure that there is a parking plan where they have the amount of spots legal for a four-family, because in 1979, it certainly wasn't our fault that it didn't go through that way. So that would be one question I'd like to have answered.
Counselor Gilman, I see you have your hand up. Do you want to answer this question? Is that?
Sure, yeah. I, I sent this letter to Joanne on this afternoon, and I asked her if this came up. We could upload it and just show the public the letter. The letter was sent by Bill Sanborn. It was quite thorough, and we included in the conditions of the motion the, the requests that we have as a city council. We actually asked for two meetings because of this letter, and the letter was fully vetted. And the, and I was going to address it in the narrative and, and discuss what my conversation was with Bill Sanborn. And we did talk about this in the P and D meeting, the second one. So I just wanted to, to answer that.
Okay, so parking's up to, up to par? Okay, so parking's up to, up to par?
Yes, every, well, do you want, I mean, do you want me to go into it before the narrative?
No, no, we'll wait till council discussion before, this is just council question, so I don't wanna get, I don't wanna put the cart before the horse here. All right, any other councilor questions? All right, seeing none, I will call, close the public hearing and defer to our planning and development chair, Councilor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. On a motion by Council Gilman, seconded by Council Holgrim, the planning and development committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council grant to Megan E. Breaker, Esquire of Klein Gardner and O'Connor, P.C. On behalf of owners Catherine Swagger and Joyce E. McCullough, a special council permit, special council permit two thousand twenty-one oh oh one for the property located at Cross Street number twelve, assessors map fifty lot eighty in the R five district pursuant to GZO section two point three point one seven, conversion two or new family, multifamily or apartment dwelling, four to six dwelling units for a fourth dwelling unit. This permit is manned the basis of plans and elevations dated February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one and submitted to the city clerk on April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, entitled zoning board of appeals plan and floor plans for twelve Cross Street Gloucester. With a condition, if this is modified to fewer than six parking spaces, it is referred to the zoning board of appeals for proper approval. Subject to new information and or debate that results from the public hearing, this special council permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
Been made by Councilor Gilman, seconded by Council Holgrim, Holgrim, Council Gilman, any discussion?
Great, so the narrative is, at our May fifth P and D meeting, Attorney Breaker was clear that there were no planned structural changes to the twelve Cross Street location. The former owners in nineteen seventy-nine received variances to get relief to cover the property from, to convert the property from a three to four family home. It then went before council, but it was not recorded at the registry of deeds. The owners wished to remedy this clerical error to sell the property. On the ZBA's decision in nineteen seventy-nine, it was noted that the parking required six spots. Instead, there's one spot out front and five out back. P and D requested an approval from the building commissioner and postponed our vote until receiving this. On May nineteenth, we received our requested letter from Bill Sanborn. And he modified, and we modified our vote with a condition, if these parking spots were modified to fewer than six, it would need to go back to ZBA for approval. And we have a copy of that letter if you wish to read it. And Bill actually, Bill Sanborn actually proofread our motion that night to make sure the wording was acceptable. And we did talk about the water issue. And Bill Sanborn said that that is all taken into consideration in terms of normal permitting when any types of measures are taken to remedy a parking and change that. So that's part of the normal process and he didn't feel like we needed to take anything on our permit to acknowledge that, except to let the public know that that is our protocol. So I hope that's helpful and, and I, and I wanted to take a moment to thank Megan Breaker, Attorney Breaker. She was last on the agenda for two of the longest meetings I think we've ever had in P and D. And she was a trooper, she was professional. And at the end of the meeting, we all just, we were very, very grateful. So it's really nice to work with an applicant that that is that pleasant and understanding, so just wanted to make that comment, thank you.
Thank you, Belle. Any other councilor discussion? Council Holgrim.
I was happy to sink my teeth into this, it was a fascinating experience. Megan, echoing Councilor Gilman, you really did your homework and I appreciate it to do this, to help clean it up.
Thank you, Jen, we lost you for a split second, a little glitch there, so that's all right. We got the, got the flavor of your, of your thoughts. Any other councilor discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll.
Council Pet has his hand raised.
I'm sorry, Council Pet.
No problem. I just wanted to echo what Council Gilman and Council Holgrim had said about Megan doing the due diligence to go back through this history. It's challenging, like Council Nolan had said, you know, we don't know what happened or we're not responsible for what happened, say, twenty or, in this case, forty years ago. But I want to appreciate her going through it all and working with the building inspector and everyone to get this squared away and let her know there may be, there may be some, some room on the city archives committee if you want to volunteer to, to go do that at some point, but thank you, Megan.
Attaboy, guy, recruit, recruit, recruit. All right, any other councilor discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll call, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Memar.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holgrim.
Yes.
And myself, Council Little Blank, yes, motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, Megan, thank you, we appreciate your patience and being with us this evening.
Thank you so much, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
You too. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is public hearing twenty twenty-one twenty, special city council permit twenty twenty-one, number two. Webster Street number eleven, map forty-seven lot thirteen Gloucester zoning ordinance section one point, one point six parentheses B for building heights in excess of three point two limits and building heights in excess of fifty-five feet in the R twenty district.
All right, so set up some standards, some rules here. We will give the opponent fifteen minutes, we will give the opposition fifteen minutes. We will give anybody that would like to speak in favor or in opposition after this up to three minutes, if it gets repetitive, the same thing over and over again, we'll ask to cut it back just a little bit. And we will have our rebuttal and then we will go on with the public hearing for questions and so forth, just so everybody knows. So I will open the public hearing and also we're speaking about the height only this evening. If you're gonna speak about traffic or anything else that goes along with this special permit, I'm gonna ask you to refrain from bringing up anything, this is height only, just so everybody knows. All right, so I will open the public, open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. Chairman Pope?
Thank you, Council President. We're here tonight to make the case for the special permit for the city in regards to height for the new school. The school has been in the process of being planned and built since, basically since two thousand fourteen. But in two thousand sixteen, we submitted a, a a statement of interest in MSBA, we were accepted, when we were accepted, we were accepted as one of eighteen school buildings out of eighty-five that they had applied that year, which meant we were, we were very deserving of, of needing a new school. That being said, we went through quite a process, we, we started the building committee, we hired designers, we hired OPM. We proceeded to hire a contractor at risk. We've gone through any number of MSBA requirements to get to this point. But the important one is that in two thousand twenty, in, in July of two thousand twenty, we submitted a schematic design and the schematic design was accepted by MSBA. And this is a picture that you're looking at right now of the elevation from, from Webster Street of the, of the design of the building that was submitted in, in July of two thousand twenty. Now that design has not changed, that height of that building. This is the building now and, and as you can see, the only real change is, some of the paneling is a little different. There's a few windows added and, but the, the mass of the building is the same, the height of the building is the same. This building was, the, the two thousand twenty was voted on by the school building committee, it was voted on by the school committee. And it was, this was the building that the city council agreed to put on the ballot last November. And it is the building that the citizens of Gloucester voted to fund. This is the building that, that when the, when John Dunn came before the city council and you voted to authorize the loan, this is the same building. So this, this building has been vetted a number of times and the height has not changed. Now, in the, in the permitting process, we don't start the permitting process until we have a project in front of us. So we, we, we did not start trying to get permits for this building until it was approved by the, by the citizens of Gloucester and subsequently, the money was appropriated by the city council. There's a chart in front of you right now that basically shows the conditions of, of the R twenty area. And the building, the existing building met all the requirements with the exception that it was non-conforming for the front yard setback, it's only nineteen feet, four inches from Webster Street to the, to the building. It will now be a hundred and twenty, the new building will be a hundred and twenty-four feet, ten inches from the Webster Street. And I point that out because it's relative, relative to the height and it's relative to the perception of height. Because when you're standing right next to something, it seems a lot taller than when it's a hundred and twenty-four feet back. So what we're asking for is a, a, a special council permit to build a building that is fifty-six and feet, six inches above the average grade, the existing average grade. Now, the existing average grade will be brought up by basically two and a half feet. So it'll really be fifty-four feet above the, the finished grade of the project. So we will go through some of the issues here, but we're here to speak to the special permit. And we will address those items that are, are relevant to the special permit, which is the height consistent with the neighborhood character and not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood because of obstruction of views, overshadowing of properties, impairment of utilities or other adverse effects. That's the, this, the city ordinance regarding special permits. And this is what we'll, we will, we'll stick to. So I'm gonna now turn it over to Superintendent Lummis, who will go through some of these issues or all of these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Pope, thank you, city councillors. So I'll go through really explaining about the building and the heights to it and also help you understand how it fits into the neighborhood. You've seen a more extensive presentation that was shared with the P and D last week, that's available to you. But I'll go through, sort of summarize some of the big things. Well, the first part here is just the process so far we've gone through, through three P and D subcommittee meetings. Two, Council Gilman and her, and her subcommittee did a fantastic job of organizing site visits both for city councils, councillors and also for the members of the public. They were gathered a tremendous number of questions and all those that were submitted to P and D or those that were requested during site visits by members of the public were all answered a week ago at the P and D meeting in extensive detail. As you probably know, the, the subcommittee voted three no in favor of bringing it to the, the full city council and of course, we're here today. So my role here is to share this, some of the details here. What you see in front of you is simply a, a bird's eye view of the site plan. What it shows is that the elevation of the finished floor will be forty-eight feet. We do need to level out the site some because it is, sort of, it has, it has a grade to it. But you'll also see that this, the building is set back, as Mr. Pope said, quite a bit of ways from where the current building is. In terms of the height of the building, so it's, it's massed in different groupings to break up the facade and also to minimize sort of the, the impact of, of the building and the massing. So you have the academic wing to the left, which is at forty-six feet above the new grade. You have the media center, which is really the front entrance around the front edge of the front of the building at forty feet. You have the gymnasium and the double height of the gymnasium at forty-eight feet. And then you have the clear story, which is really the, connecting the front to the rear of the building. It is an open and well-lit through daylighting feature that brings light into the center of the building as well as the classrooms, administrative offices, gymnasium and the main hallway areas. So that one part there that's outlined in orange is the only part that it's at fifty-four feet above the, above the grade. Moving on, so what you see here are from the, from the, looking across the, the bus loop, what you see is the main academic building at forty-six and then the media center, which is the white with colored tiles at forty feet. But just a different look at that, just so you understand that the main academic wing height is at forty-six. You can see peeking over the media center, the clear story height, that of course is the highest part of the building at fifty-four feet. Moving on, just again, another angle on this, from, really from Webster Street, the front entrance for cars anyway. On the right-hand side, you see forty-eight feet, that's of the gymnasium, as I mentioned before. Again, the fifty-four feet of the clear story. And then off to the left, the media center again, and then further left, the academic wing at forty-six feet. So I just want to show you. Now we want to go into the rest of the neighborhood. And so just below on, on Eastern Avenue bordering the school is a four-story apartment building at forty-six feet. Remember, we were talking earlier about forty feet, forty-eight feet and then one small portion of the, of the new school at fifty-four feet. So those are comparable heights in terms of the buildings. It is important to realize that, as you know, Webster Street is angled uphill. So the, these buildings are at different field follow, of course, the topography of the, of that hill, of the street areas. And so they're actually at, at different heights, they're, in terms of where their ground level is. But we'll show you that they're comparable heights, not only with this building here, but also with other buildings as well as you go forward. So what you have here is you have, you're looking up Webster Avenue and you see a few different buildings here. They are at various elevations ranging from various heights from thirty-six feet and also thirty feet as well, but they're also at different grades. So the house up the hill there at, at the sort of light greenhouse is at elevation of fifty-three feet. And that, so that, that's really bringing that, that building up to about fifty-five, sorry, eighty, about in the eighty-five area of, of height as well. And then this building as well, thirty-six feet. And that elevation is at about forty feet, so about seventy-six feet or hot, seventy-six feet or so for that of elevation, of elevation for that building. So you can see these are three-story buildings along Webster, across the street. These buildings will be for, will have a greater distance between them and the school building because the school building is set back. And that'll help decrease the impact of, on views and also give a sense that the building is, is set back and set down below them. Moving up Webster Street, we see a four-story house, apartment building. This is at fifty, this is a fifty-foot-high structure and it's located quite a ways up the hill there. It starts at an elevation of sixty, so all told a hundred and ten feet on that one. And and also we have a view for you here. Sort of a a cut view where you can see comparing that same building we just saw. It's at a hundred and ten feet in terms of height, whereas the the building, although it's fifty-four feet in height at its very at its highest point, it's set down below that that building, which is across the way from it. So again, trying to fit this larger building, it is it is larger than the current building. We've we've increased the the height for a variety of reasons. Of course, it is a bigger school. But the increased height allows us to make sure there are a number of playgrounds on the site. And also it helps us get traffic and parking off of the neighborhood streets by making the building a little bit higher. We have room for additional parking, additional arrival and dismissal loops. And that will help us with the minimize the impact of traffic and doing those short times of arrival and dismissal during the day. This is a view of what this this apartment building house would see from Webster Street, you know, from the first story window, looking over and towards the school. Again, school is set back quite a ways from the street at this point. But you can see the what they would what they would be looking at in terms of in terms of their view. It's a different view than they have today, certainly without doubt. But we would say it's not an obstructive view. It's a view that has hundreds of feet literally from there from where they are to the building. A couple other pieces that we showed in detail at P and D and are able to show you if you choose tonight. So the other part of three point one point six of the impact of shadows and also utilities. We presented a full shadow study at P and D last week and that showed very clearly that regardless of the time of the year, there's no impact on on existing houses of the shadows. And that's because the just just where it is 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 positioned to the existing structures and also the fact that it's down below them. And it's it does have does cast some shadows on existing trees and a little bit maybe perhaps heading towards the highway, but that isn't impacting the neighbors. And then also the utilities, existing utilities is another piece of three point one point six. And as you can see here, the existing utilities will not be impacted by the height of the new building. The power lines and that go to the building will be replaced and put underground, so we'll actually be eliminating those. And then another piece of that is storm water management. Now, right now, there's very little management of storm water, so that'll be improved. And we'll have to meet D P requirements as well. So just one last slide. As folks know, and we should we mentioned earlier, actually haven't mentioned yet, just the import, excuse me, the importance of this new school building. As folks have heard time and again, the two buildings replacing veterans in East Gloucester are sixty, seventy years old. They're out of date, worn out and really failing at this point. Going forward with this facility would have a really positive impact in a variety of ways, not only for the local community, but the greater community will be able to, first of all, create a modern and it's just fantastic facility for our students and our educators and their their families. But also be able to increase open space in the city and other amenities that'll be open to a community within the building. And the special permit, of course, would allow the the much needed school project to move forward and feeling allow us to fill those various educational community needs with a much more modern school building that will last for fifty, sixty, perhaps, you know, more years than that. It was nice today. We opened the time capsule from the veterans' building today. And we saw newspapers from nineteen nineteen fifty-eight. And it was really remarkable to see those and see the opening of the building and what was going on in Gloucester and the world then. But it also is a good reminder that this building in East Gloucester will pass their useful life and time to keep going with the process and 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 make sure we're providing for our community, our families and our students going forward.
Could I just add one little thing about opening of the Times capsule? One of the items that was in that was the roster of the first class of students that was in the veterans. It was called Ward Two at the time. They didn't, it was renamed Veterans later. There were three hundred and thirty-eight students in that building. And that was before we added the modulus, so.
Awesome. And it looks like parking was parking was still an issue back then.
Probably not. They probably all walked.
All right, so we did go over a couple of minutes, so I'm gonna offer that couple of minutes to the opponents also, if they if they do wish so. And so that concludes our major part of the in favor and I will ask if there is anybody that would like to speak in opposition. And I know that we usually try to get somebody that wants to be a lead speaker. So if there's anybody that in attendance that would like to speak in opposition of this that would like to take up the majority of the time, please raise your hand. I see Patty, and she's one of the main people on this, so I will refer out to Patty. Patty, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right. And before we start, do you have anybody else that will follow you for the lead presentation for in opposition? Or is it just gonna be you?
I don't think so. I think I'm doing this and then to be butted, so.
Okay, all right. So go right ahead, Patty. And you got a little little more than fifteen minutes of, you know, give or take, so.
Okay, and I just wanted to reiterate what's what's was just talked about that. It wasn't just about the height, so let's move on to that. Okay. Hello, my name is Patty Amorall. My address is fourteen Myrtle Square. I want to thank the city council for the opportunity to speak at this meeting tonight. As we all know, this is a critical vote for an extremely important project in our city. I want to thank councillor Belle Gilman for emailing the three point one point six B special permit ordinance and would like to clarify its contents as follows. Building heights in excess of thirty-five feet may be authorized by special permit issued by city council. Said permit shall contain such conditions as a council deems necessary and shall only be issued upon a written determination by the council that such increase in allowable height is consistent with the neighborhood character and will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood because of the obstruction of views, overshadowing of other properties, impairment of utilities and other adverse impacts. We are here today to discuss and vote on Gloss's three point one point six B city ordinance. As we all know, the vote tonight is for a special height permit. It is a fact that Webster Street is zoned at thirty feet and the application the city has filed is asking for fifty-six point five feet. This is an increase of almost a hundred percent. This building is huge. Is the allowable height consistent with the neighborhood character? Webster Street is a densely populated neighborhood and has many sizes and shapes of building, some residential and some not. This neighborhood, along with its multifamily apartments, also has many single-family homes making up its neighborhood. These residents will most definitely see a difference of their everyday living. This building is just huge. Will this city, will this school building stand at fifty-six point five feet obstruct views? We believe that a building of this size cannot help but obstruct many neighbors' views. As we stated before, many homes are single-family as well as multifamily. And even the highest building, standing over fifty feet, which we're not sure of yet, will not see the views they are seeing now. Is this building will tower over them as well? Again, this building is huge. This shadow study was presented at the planning and development meeting the same night they voted on it. We believe that the residents that live there have a right to see the shadow study and have more detail in it that has been presented. What is good for one neighborhood should be good for all. Will this school building impair utilities? The addition of two hundred and twenty to total four hundred and forty students plus eighty staff will exponentially increase the water consumption impact when supplied to the neighborhood. Adding this many students to this building may overload the existing sewer infrastructure. Our rates did go up again. This could have a severe impact to the fragile ecosystem in that area, salt marshes, which is very important to our economy. This new building will have a significant increase in power consumption as well, taxing the antiquated grid for the area. What other adverse impacts are there with this school building? Let's think. Green space, loss of Mayos Field playground will take away the freedom of play for the children on Webster Street, the neighborhood and the entire community. Taking away this open green space reduces our recreational areas and ball fields once again. Two minus one equals minus one. We know this. Our children deserve more than a sixty-by-ninety-fence and artificial turf area. Traffic, our traffic commissioner, Bob Ryan, has spoken many times on the traffic in Eastern Ave. One twenty-eight in Webster Street neighborhood. And he has included that the traffic that will be generated by this consolidated school will have an extraordinary amount of residential traffic, residue traffic, sorry. Even to the point, if the traffic is laid out, it will reach the Rockport line. For a minute's statement, he stated he does not agree that this is the place for this consolidated school. He also stated that you may be able to mitigate within the school project, but you cannot mitigate the traffic about one twenty-eight High Road, Eastern Ave. Safety will definitely be compromised. Webster Street also hosts the private Gloucester Fraternity Club and also PMS Machine Factory. Both of these businesses create a constant stream of traffic and flow to large steel trucks that are constantly delivering on Webster Street. The increased traffic will be additional safety hazards added to these daily deliveries. Niche Engineering, Doran Whittier, a traffic consultant, also shows that the traffic will be doubled with no answer or remedy for the traffic that we generated.
Point of order, Senator President, point of order.
Other than some possible ideas.
To do with the height.
Okay, I would like, okay, okay. It will be a huge building. Okay, we saw that said a hundred times. Okay. I would like to ask each of the city councillors to think about all the listed criteria with casting your vote. Yes, you are voting for a height permit and the criteria has to be seriously taken into consideration before casting your vote. As we saw in her, we maybe just heard from everybody else who just talked before me. There are issues with this and we all know it. Do not repeat what we did at West Parish. Do not repeat it. You know, don't think about the money that's wasted. Think about the money you're gonna save the taxpayers because this this project, we know, should not be in that neighborhood. Thank you very much.
All right, Patty, thank you. All right, so we have the main speakers for the opponent and the opponent. And I am gonna hand it over to the in favor and opposition for the public now. So if you would like to speak in favor or in opposition, please raise your hand. So that way we can go through everybody all at once and not ask who's in favor, who's in opposition and raise your hand at that time. So if you'd like to speak on this matter, raise your hand now. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine if you're watching on a device or computer or laptop or whatever you're watching it on. There's a raise hand button, so raise your hand now. And when I call on you, you can speak and you can explain whether you are in favor or in opposition. I will allow up to three minutes. Let's try not to get repetitive with the everything. I do have a little sign. I will be keeping track of the time. So if you want to look up while you are speaking, I will hold up a one-minute sign. And that means you've got one minute left on your time, so just so we're clear. And I will open it up to anybody that would like to speak in favor or in opposition. So we have our former president, council president Paul Lundberg. Paul, can you hear me?
I can, Steve. Thank you very much, Mr. President. And it's awfully good to see all of you, even though it's not in person and thanks for holding this hearing. So I'd just like to be very brief.
Hold on, voice up. Name and address for the record, sir.
All right, Paul Lundberg, Five Bridgewater Street in Gloucester.
Thank you. Go ahead.
As as we all know, the city council has had to consider various aspects of the school project over the last year. In fact, at least four or five times, you've had aspects of the project to vote upon. Each one of those aspects has been very specific to to a a step in the process that has brought us to this point. You know, you you were, the council considered the transfer of of Mayos Field to the school committee, the Article ninety-seven of matter to the state legislature, the language for the ballot initiative and the loan order and so forth. And each time you guys did a great job in considering what the ordinance or what the matter before you was. Of course, as we all know, the the school has a tremendous impact on many aspects of of our life. And, you know, I'll just say for me, I'm just very excited that we've made it this far. It's a great project. But having said that, you know, three point one point six B, the building in excess of thirty-five feet, as as Patty pointed out, has very specific things for you to consider. The neighborhood character, the obstruction of views, overshadowing utilities and so forth. I think the thing that that strikes me most about those considerations is that, you know, it is consistent with the neighborhood character. There's been a school there for sixty years. There'll be a school there going forward. The the thing about the views and the the shadowing, you know, the school site itself is slightly below Webster Street at the beginning and Webster Street goes up while the the site stays the same. So, you know, yes, there will be a change of views, but not an obstruction of views. And the shadows, of course, go the other way away from Webster Street. So on those kinds of things in the presentation that that Ben made, you know, outlined those. And I would just encourage you to, when you come to your vote, to think about those things. And that's that's pretty much what I wanted to say. Again, thank you all for serving on the city council and good seeing you again.
Same here, Paul. Thank you. All right, up next, we have Ben. Ben, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ben Blanchard, I'm at fourteen Webster Street. I wish I wish that we were presented the current view of the school as it now stands because there's absolutely no view when this school is being built, no view of the existing trees behind the building. There will be a total obstruction of views, which I think will have a detrimental impact on the health, emotional health of people being in a congested area. Is I am for schools and higher education. But I'm concerned about my my concern is the neighborhood and and the kids in my neighborhood and my kids. And to compare, you know, to compare a thirty-fifth building with with this height. This, the height of this building is 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 I we have to consider the width of these buildings all around here. The the biggest width is also is thirty to thirty-five feet. This building is gonna go up forty-six to fifty-three feet and it's gonna be about about two hundred and twenty-six feet wide. That's a massive wall. It looks like a community college. So I'm there's gonna they're absolutely going to be obstruction of views to the green. It's going to be detrimental to our neighborhood. We're not talking about, I I'm all for local community and the kids and the and the greater community. But I'm talking about my neighborhood and the kids in my neighborhood. That's that's that that green space is used almost every night, every night it's being used right now. My concern is the health of the habitat. I think it's done to be detrimental. And to compare the height of the of that building at the foot of the hill to this building is is I don't believe it's comparable. I'm hoping that you guys will consider this height as being a monster height and it is going to block all the the only green space that we have in our condensed neighborhood. I think that just one other point I want to bring up is is that the citizens of Gloucester has barely approved this and I believe that the ballot question was confusing. And that's all I want to say. So thank you for hearing me and please consider my neighborhood and my views that we're all losing. It's the only green space that we have in this congested neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right, up next, we have Ms. Palazzola. Olympia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Name and address, please.
Olympia Palazzola, fifty-seven Western Avenue, Gloucester, Mass. The height of this building. The height of this building, um, and the weight of this building, how is this gonna be, be affected when they put pipes underneath the field that's gonna be in there? I mean, uh, that's a heavy, big building, and I know the pipes are supposedly gonna take the water down through that area. Has anyone talked to the Conco- Con- Conservation Commission yet about that part of the, the thing of what you're voting for? The second thing is that, you know, I didn't realize that each story was gonna be fourteen, fourteen and then sixteen feet. You know, they could have almost lowered that height by probably four feet on each floor and, and not raised it so high. There are things that they could have done way back when. And uh, like the man that just spoke before, the vote was taken before, the vote um, was taken way before any of this stuff came up. This is kind of amazing to me that now, now we're into the real nitty gritty of this building. And um, and people are scared of how, how big this is. The neighborhood, the, the height for the neighborhood, and I'll talk, the neighborhood is mostly renters. And these neighbors are scared to death to speak. You know, probably a lot of them don't even have a computer. So unless you live in that neighborhood, and none of you do, you are ruining a small neighborhood that was always used. The traffic's gonna be incredible, which I know I can't talk about, but the height of this thing doesn't make any sense. I, I wish you guys would think, think twice, three times, four times. Yes, we need a school. No one's denying that. But think about how big and where it is. All the pictures that I saw with all the things that I watched. I mean, just the entrance where these kids go inside and they go up a staircase that looked like kind of a glass staircase is tall for little kids. You know, they're gonna be going into a, a school that shouldn't be built for older children. So I, I still am amazed by what I've seen by this height. The um, the other thing is, they showed pictures, excuse me, of the um, cafeteria having a floor to ceiling glass wall. Are we hiring people to bring in some kind of bucket truck to go clean the inside of these win- windows? There's no way that, that janitors can go in. And there's the height. And a- along with the height, they keep saying it's so energy fee- energy efficient. Well, heat rises. And uh, these are little children that are gonna be in that school. So with all of this height figures that we're talking about, I, I just, I just can't imagine that you really, really are in favor of this. It's beautiful. It doesn't belong on that street. But if there was another location, hold off and put it someplace else. This isn't making any sense to most people I have talked to, but these people won't get out and speak. They're scared to death of speaking. So I just, I just can't imagine that you're far the height of this building being so big in a small neighborhood. So other than that, um, I know Jonathan said if, if they don't build the school right now, they've already spent four million dollars and twenty, twenty thousand per month. They've already, they've already rented i- the uh, school, the uh, St. Anne's School. And it's not approved yet. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, it's not approved yet. So are we in the bag for two years worth of twenty thousand a month? Without it being approved yet? So I mean, think about some of the things that have gone past this. Yes, you're approving the height. I know you had a walk down and you know, people, I can't say they felt good about the walk around. Um, so there's a lot going on with this property.
We're up around four minutes. I, I figured I'd give you a little bit more time because um.
Um, I, I'm done, but Joe want to say a couple of words. Can he do that with his own name?
Sure can. Go ahead. Name an address for the record, Joe.
Joe Palazzola, fifty-seven Weston Avenue.
Thank you, go ahead.
Now, first thing you want me to talk about the height, I'll put it simple. It's too big for the neighborhood. If it was all right, if that was all right, why didn't it go in East Costa? Okay, because it's not in my neighborhood. You don't want it in your neighborhood, but you want it in somebody else's neighborhood. Okay, we get a police chief, former police chief there that knows what the trash, uh, traffic situation is. And so I mean, you gotta think, you know, Mr. Pope says, well, we'll waste four thousand. Well, that's okay, four million rather. And so you're gonna say, oh, that's all right, but we're gonna spend sixty-seven million. So anyway.
Go back to the drawing board.
But yeah, yeah, go back to the drawing board. Well, if you pass this, I'm gonna say one thing, other than uh, Mike O'Hara, Councilor O'Hara. You guys will be known for ruining a community. Okay, so it'll be in your record down the road.
And, thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Appreciate it. All right, uh, up next, we have Tracy. Tracy, welcome back. Can you hear me?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep, name and address for the record, please.
Tracy O'Neil, twelve Friends Street.
Thank you, go ahead.
I, I do live in the neighborhood. And I drive by that school multiple times a day. Uh, my business is on, is at two fourteen Eastern Ave, which is the building that's just beyond the Common Crow. So I drive Friends Street to Webster Street to Eastern Avenue multiple times a day. I'm wondering how many of you people do it because Eastern Avenue traffic is very busy. Um, big, I've, I've walked to work for the exercise. It's a dangerous walk and the sidewalks are no good either. So sorry, this is about height. So um, in one of the pictures or um, schematics, I was at a P and D meeting last week. I was at two meetings last week. The first meeting, Michelle from Doran Whittier was there. And I asked her if the property, if you're not going to touch the hill, right, the hill going down to the, to the field and to the school, then why does this schematic show a blue fence all the way to Webster Street with a cutout for six cars? So you're gonna cut the cars, the parking down from ten to six? That's okay. I don't care. But what I'm, if, if you're not going, the pictures that I see show the school in the fake turf level with Webster Street. So I am of the belief that you're gonna fill it all the way to the Webster Street. So forget that hill, because the pictures that are you're showing show the school and the bus thing and the fence all the way up to Webster Street because it has a cutout for the cars that park at the top of Webster Street. So if that's not true, so if that is true, you gotta put fifty-six and a half feet higher than Webster Street, than higher than that, I don't know how high that hill is. Was it ten, twelve, fifteen feet? So it's gonna be that much higher than Webster Street. So it's not gonna be down in that hollow. It's gonna be level with Webster Street. Your pictures show it. So I, I don't know how, does anyone know how high that hill is? I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, Tracy.
Okay.
Um, we're almost at three minutes, just so you know.
All right. Did you hear everything I asked?
I did. I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
All right, so no one knows how high that hill is, but the pictures, so I asked Michelle at Doran Whittier, why is that the case if you have that blue fence and you got the cutout for the cars? If you're not gonna touch the hill, then why do you have it showing that you're filling in the hill? So you would have to take the height of the hill. I don't know how high that hill is. I have no idea. And add the fifty-six and a half feet to that. So that's one thing. Um, I don't know how you're gonna put power lines on the ground when there's, when there's a pond there, but that's, I'm not an engineer. Um.
Tracy, we're at uh, almost four minutes.
Okay, and adverse effects to the neighborhood? Pollution? I'm gonna have cars, it's a half a mile from the school to Distino's. It's a half a mile from the school to Flanagan's gas station. I'm gonna have cars sitting out in front of my house, running the engine. And there's gonna be no trees around because you're gonna cut them all down. We all know that. And so pollution and, and adverse effects of the neighborhood is very bad health. So thanks for listening. Please truly consider that Doran Whittier is gonna fill that property up to the street level.
All right, Trace, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up. We're at four and a half minutes. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be lenient with everybody because I know, I know the school took uh, a little bit more time. And I'm just trying to give it back a little bit and not be so stringent on, on the three minutes with you guys. So I'm trying to give everybody a little bit extra time because Patty spoke and she didn't take her full fifteen minutes. And I'm just trying to be you know, equal with everybody. All right, up next, uh, up next we have Sue. I can't get Sue on because they want me to promote her as a panelist. Um, all right, so hold on, Sue, before we get to you, because if I promote you as a panelist, um, I'm not gonna be able to take you out as a panelist for, until, if I do, I will kick you out of the meeting completely. So if you have another means of calling in to speak, and all I see is your name is Sue, you're gonna have to, because if I promote you to a panelist, and I disable your talking after, it's gonna bump you off, and I don't wanna do that. So uh, I'll circle back to you at the end. If you got another means of trying to get into the meeting, um, po- possibly on a, on a phone might be easier. Um, but I will, uh, I will circle back to you last. If I gotta promote you a panelist, at that point, I will. But just so you know, that it's not allowing me to let you speak unless I promote you. Uh, all right, up next we have Denise. Denise, can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Name an address for the record, please.
Uh, Denise Biscucci, uh, twenty Virggo Heights. Um, first I want to ask you, um, Council of Blank, is why you're restricting um, any traffic um, issues?
Uh, because that's not in the application this evening. It's for height only.
Well, the three point one point six B has a criteria that you, all of you should be looking into to have your vote on the height. So i- am I not correct? Because I, if I read the three point one six B, you have all these other listings, which actually um.
But they, we have to refer those to the height, not the traffic, not the safety, not the water. Um, all these, all these questions under three point one point six B are for the height. You asked a question, so when we vote, we have to take in consideration of those standards for the height.
Okay, so what, what do you allow under adverse impact? That is going to be a, a part of this huge building. So I guess I'm confused at that, but anyway, I'll, I'll let that go only because, you know, I think there's a lot of things that we should be able to speak about because it isn't an ordinance of the city. But I wanna go back to what Ben, no, I met Ben and on the street one day when they were doing some, some of the site inspections there. And he has a house that's probably um, twenty feet high. And I feel for him because he has a house that he looks over this school, because it's only one level. He sees beautiful green. I know it turns in the foliage. So he does have a view from his house. Also, the Palazzola house is thirty feet, so they're gonna lose their, their, also their view. And to the left of that, there's another small house that's probably twenty, twenty-five feet. So I, I beg to differ from all of you that said that they won't lose a view. You know what? You should go stand in front of the houses and take a look, because that's gonna, what's gonna happen. So I feel really bad for that. Um, also, we were talking about the height of this building. What is actually on, gonna be on top of this, this building? So the building is fifty-six point five is your application. What is not part of that application is what they're gonna put on top of that building. So as far as, I don't know if they're air conditioning, whatever kind of units, those, I was told are gonna be between four and six feet high. So now you're talking about fifty-six plus, you're gonna add all these other units on top of this building. So now you're talking sixty feet. So consider the thought that you have this huge building that you want to have an exception for the height where it's zoned for thirty feet. But now you want fifty-six as far as what is written on the permit. But it's gonna be over sixty feet high. Are any of you understanding that that is extremely high? So this height, you're not asking really on paper, it's fifty-six point five, but you're gonna have other things on top of that building. So I, I hope you think about that because this is huge. And just quoting Val Gilman from the Marina, it's just a huge building. I think that's a very good thing to think about, is that the P and D voted all of you about the view for the people in the neighborhood and that it is a huge building. That is, has to be important that you understand if you vote for this, you are voting for a huge building in a small neighborhood zoned at thirty feet. So I hope you think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise. All right, uh, up next, we have Pete. Pete, can you hear me? Hello, Peter.
Hi, Steve, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Pete, right? I live at twelve Mystic Avenue. I'd like to speak on the, so we're looking at a double. From, we're going from fifty-six point five to thirty, from, in, in the, in the, the original ordinance is thirty feet, correct? You can't build more than thir- you're not supposed to build more than thirty feet. We're shooting for fifty-six point five. Now, the houses are across the street, which now their, their view is a field. And after the field is trees. Now, that's the view. That's the view that the neighbors are looking at now. Now you put a, you put a school forty, forty feet, let's make it even, it's way across the street, or forty feet in. If there's a fifty-foot tree behind there, you're not gonna see the tree no more. So how Mr. Loomis can say it's not an obstructed view, I don't understand. Their view now is a field and trees. That's the view for the neighbors that have been there for years. And I think you guys should think about the neighborhood. I think this neighborhood has been really beat up quite a bit. And I understand this goes back twenty years. I feel bad for the people in this neighborhood for what the city has done to them. Now, I would appreciate you guys to give the neighbors some thought before you vote. And uh, it's just wrong what you're doing. That's it. Thank you.
All right, uh, up next we have Kathy. Kathy, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Kathy Roberts, twelve Lindahl Street.
Go ahead.
Okay, and um, I have to say that I'm in opposition to the school building and its height. And um, the fact that the size of the building will be taking away Meadows Field, which is used every single night. And I just don't know how we can replace that. And I agree with uh, what Patty Emerald said. So I don't wanna reiterate everything she said, but I do agree with um, a lot of what she said. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Kathy. All right, uh, up next we have Aria. Aria, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Aria McElhenny, nineteen Allen Street. Um, I'm gonna keep it quick because I'm driving right now, but it's, was really important to me to comment on this because I care very much about this project. I'm one hundred percent behind this school building. Um, I think it's extremely important for every child in Gloucester that they get the education and the space that they deserve in the school building that meets their needs and for our teachers as well. So I strongly urge our council tonight to vote in favor of this so that this project can move forward. And um, I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much for listening to everyone. I care so much about this city and about this neighborhood and about our kids. And I think um, I, I appreciate what everyone's saying. Let's think about the neighborhood. And I, I would ask that um, let's think about the children of this neighborhood as well. And that they deserve to have this school. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Aria. And be careful, please. All right, uh, up next we have Pam. Pam, can you hear me?
Yes, I figured out how to talk legally.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hand Steel, ten Pilot Hill. The height is going to affect the diversity of the city because the annual incomes are not that high if you look online. the diversity of the city because the annual incomes are not that high. If you look online, it's kinda surprising. The college educated rate is low. There's a lot more elderly in Gloucester than the statewide average. Can we afford to maintain this height of a building? What is it gonna cost? And are we gonna end up demolishing it? Because the birth rate, it is documented by the United States government is going down low. I can tell you every demographic, how many kids they're having, projected to have, if you wanna hear it. I think this is really important. We can't bankrupt the city over this. We can figure this out.
All right, is that all, Pam?
That, isn't that a lot?
You got, you got two and a, two?
No, no, I, that's my, my point. I'm speaking for seniors. I'm speaking for the fact it would be being pushed out by the one percenters. We're fighting a lot of different uh, things. And when Val did her study, I filled out the form of what I thought of open space and I never heard a thing. I consider Mato's open space and it wasn't even considered in her presentation, taking that away. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, all right, up next, we have Mary Ann. Mary Ann, can you hear me?
Point of order, Mr. President. I just wanna remind the, uh, attendees that people should not be disparaging members of the council. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. I appreciate that.
Mary Ann, can you hear me?
I surely can. Mary Ann Albert Boucher, ninety-three Mount Pleasant Avenue. Um, height impacts traffic. Yet I couldn't even get any additional information from the traffic commission. Don't know why, but I couldn't. In fact, it was presented from the city council that we couldn't get any ad- additional information. As recently as this month, the question necessary to consider the height of this project were honestly captured in the official document requesting a special permit. The application was filed, oh, incorrectly. Not sure why. Um, traffic related to the prior elementary school. I'm sorry. I'm so disturbed by all of this. Um, the website we're directed to as recently as today provides a document that will not even load in answer to the all questions. These questions have been asked about height since the beginning and the school should, or school committee, building committee, any committee should have flushed all of this out before any votes. Um, height impacts health and wellness because the proposed school is a consolidation that does not fit. And it wipes out Article ninety-seven protected land and natural buffer from two major highways, Route one twenty-eight, Route one twenty-seven. Pollution impact, traffic emissions impact.
Counselor, point of order.
Everybody else got to speak in regards to how they felt. I feel I have the right, as everybody else did. No one else was stopped. It is my.
Mary Ann, we do, we do have rules of procedure. When counselor calls point of order, um, we have to, um, she has to explain. That's all. Go ahead, counselor.
There are four components of three point one point six B that we should be, um, focusing on. And, um, I don't believe that this, um, this person is, is focused on that. So I just ask that we stay on track with what's in front of us.
And that's. May I ask then how, um, the, um, the time capsule is focused on height? Uh, Mr. Loomis, can we, can I ask him, um, if he has verified or confirm information to the height of all of those buildings that they put up? There's no confirmation. It was announced by, by, um, Ms. Rogers that she did not have confirmation on the height of those buildings. Webster's, the bottom of Webster Street, the Gray House, the Green House, none of those were confirmed according to Ms. Rogers. Height impacts justice for equal access. No translation as recently as this month for all of those neighbors. Patty Emerald was the one that asked for it. Thank you, Patty Emerald, for asking it. I, I could go on and on and on, and I won't. But I feel as if this entire project right here, right now, has already been decided. We know it. And it's disturbing to the highest level. Thank you very much.
Mary Ann. All right, uh, up next, we have, um, school committee member Kathy Clancy. Kathy, name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, uh, Kathy Clancy, seventy-eight High Popplets Road, Gloucester.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you for, um, holding this public hearing on this very important project and this particular aspect of the project, which is height. Um, we, if, if anyone looks around Gloucester, you will see that our existing school buildings may be one story uh, or possibly two where the gym is. But before that, most of the school buildings were three stories. We can look at Central Grammar, Eastern Ave, Maplewood, um, you know, there's a reason that buildings, um, particularly schools and others, you know, try to reduce the footprint so that there is less roof to take care of. Um, there's more open space. And in particular, on this property, it, you know, we, um, there's consideration of site circulation. So there are reasons why, buildings and schools are built multi-story. The other thing is that when this design came forward, it, you know, was mirroring the success in terms of academics that we've seen at West Parish School. Um, a way of providing an intimate situat-, you know, um, environment for kids with kindergarten and first on the first floor, so they're not going up big stairs. Um, second and third on the next floor and fi-, um, four and five on the top floor. So academically, um, this particular design is, is a really good way of educating our youngest learner. Um, the, um, uh, one of the things when we picked this site was preserving open space. Um, and this particular site is, you know, did we believe accomplish that? The height itself is because of using a smaller footprint. I wanna be clear that there, everybody's quoting this fifty-four feet as being the height of the building. That's not true. It's the um, particular piece that's at the entrance. And there's a reason for that, which is to bring in natural light. The majority of the building is lower than that. And I'm sure someone else will address those particular, um, fine thing, um, fine point. So I would say that a single-story school, if that is what people are thinking, I mean, it's very common that schools exist within neighborhoods. It's very common that they are not similar to houses because that's not their function. They are, you know, municipal buildings that, um, have stature and standing and, and a welcoming place for children. Um, and there would just be no place in our city for a single-story school to accommodate our elementary schools at this point. Um, so I, in, um, you know, I also believe that this will enhance the neighborhood. Um, you know, Aria mentioned the families. This is very important for the families. And I also know during our public comment of choosing sites, we had a lot of East Gloucester neighbors and residents who really wanted to keep East Gloucester there if it could fit. And they will miss having kids walk by their houses and, and the, you know, sound of kids giggling on their way to and from school. So, you know, I view that as a complete enhancement. Um, so I encourage you to support the special permit. Uh, we've tried to do the best, um, we can in terms of design to keep the massing down and to accommodate all the educational costs. Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, all right, so we've got a couple of things going on here. We've got Patty Emerald back up and, uh, we have Sue. So I will, I know Patty spoke earlier. Um, Patty, I will allow you to speak, uh, briefly. I know you spoke earlier um, as an opponent. And if you'd like to speak for a minute or two now, I will allow that. Uh, name and address for the record, please.
Patty Emerald, fourteen Myrtle Square.
Go ahead.
We know that this proposed school building stands at fifty-six point five feet, will no doubt be seen for many neighborhoods. The height of our city buildings affects all of our residents of our city in many ways, some positive and some negative. We know that our Webster Street neighbors will lose their ball field on Mato's Playground and their tree line, too. We know the adverse impacts of the proposed school building are many and will affect all of our citizens' quality of life. From the loss of Article ninety-seven protected land to the loss of tree line, it will be felt. From the loss of outdoor play and gym space for our schoolchildren, it will be felt. From the loss of the state-of-the-art ball field and state-of-the-art lights, it will be felt. From the loss of our native birds and creatures, big and small's habitat, it will be felt. From the loss of history as this pond, as it was referred to, was instrumental in supplying ice that was cut and helped to feed our city and beyond, it will be felt. From the loss of a dedicated memorial playground recreation, you know, named after a young Portuguese soldier named Private Joseph S. Meadows, it will be felt.
I love Pa-, I love Patty's passion.
I got one more sentence. Know your vote tonight will be as historic as the day back in nineteen thirty-five.
Order, counselor, it's not regarding height.
All right, Patty. I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, please. Patty, can you hear me? You're on mute. All right, we need to stick to what we're, we're discussing.
The end of this was, know your vote tonight will be as historic as the day back in nineteen thirty-five, when our city and its residents all came together to get, dedicate this land, the Joseph S. Meadows Junior Playground. Thank you for Joseph. I will speak for Joseph. So.
All right, um, if you've already spoken once, I, I allowed Patty to speak because she was the lead speaker for the opponent and I allowed her to come in as a uh, resident to skip her, her time. Um, if you have spoken once already tonight, we're not gonna circle back for everybody. We'll be here all evening. I see Pete has his hand up with, uh, all due respect, Pete, I'm gonna, um, I'm not gonna be able to call on you again if you have already spoken once. So, um, we have our school committee member Melissa Texer Prince. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We do. Name and address for the record, please.
Great. My name is Melissa Joy Texer Prince. I live at four, six, seven Western Ave, Gloucester, Massachusetts.
Go ahead.
Um, so I am just joining this meeting. I apologize. I was at a licensing board meeting. I have absolutely no idea what has been said by anyone other than Patty in the last two minutes. Um, but I just wanted.
Speak for yourself. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to speak in support of this, um, proposal tonight. Um, I can say as someone who was born and raised on Portage Hill and attended Veterans Memorial School, I know that neighborhood very well. Um, the other day, um, I think it was two, two days ago, I actually went and sat down, um, sat and stood near the veteran's school to watch school come in, um, session in the morning to view the traffic. It was more of a traffic issue that I went there because I just wanted to see how bad or actually how good it worked. Um, but I was looking around and noticing and remembering all the buildings that are there around that school. Um, you have the corner on one Webster Street, that's a three or four-story building. Um, up on the corner of Friends Street, on the corner of Webster and Friends Street, there's a very tall four-story gray building there. Um, a little ways more up the street on thirty-four Webster Street, where I spent half my life at my best friend's house. That's another four-story house up there. So if you look around in that neighborhood, um, and I think I brought this up in the school committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, I'm kinda surprised that it, that, um, that some would expect that a building wouldn't be tall in that neighborhood. I mean, I know when there was discussions of mile marker, I got to watch those P and D meetings and, and learn a little bit about zoning and expectations from the community and concerns from the community about heights. And I, and I could see why that decision was made. But when I stood in that neighborhood, a neighborhood that I grew up in, knowing that along Friends Street, along Taylor Street, um, going up the hill towards Green Street, there are tall buildings in that neighborhood. And I don't see that this building would be out of place. Um, like, has been said, it's not the whole building that's gonna be that tall. Um, and the way that it sits on the land, um, I don't see it as being a big eyesore. So I, I hope that you will consider this, um, zoning request and, um, or, or, um, what the proposal be for you and approve it knowing that it is not gonna be this large building that sticks out in a neighborhood where it is unmatched by the size of other buildings. So thank you for listening to me and I appreciate your support in this matter.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, uh, up next, we have Patty. Patty, can you hear me?
Yes, Steve.
Name and address for the record, please.
Patty Page, Retitled Clover Way.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, and I, I'd like to speak about the height tonight, but I also just like to clarify, um, before I get any off-topic. Um, when the proponents spoke, they mentioned some things, you know, they, they went through quite a few th- issues, actually. I wanna know if I can speak to any of those because it seems to me they addressed this in in the, um, light of the height. So I, I don't wanna be off-topic, but, um, I don't know, if someone just wants to clarify that for me. In other words, if, if one of the opponents, proponents spoke about an issue, can I address that same issue?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Go, go ahead and.
And I'll, and I'll change on. Okay, sorry about that. Um, because what, um, was mentioned was the fact that the voters voted for this. And I just really like to clarify that in the, in the eye that I see it. Um, the voters did vote. We voted to support an override. We voted to support our community and our children in our community and good education. That in no way was tied to a location um, of a school. We, we didn't endorse the location in that vote. And it, it's often worded that they voted for it in, in a lock, stock and barrel. I don't think that's fair to say. But the height, it seems, was increased in order to minimize the massing, is the way it wa-, it was worded. Um, so if you're gonna minimize massing in a site and you need that for the site circulation patterns, it seems to me that, that's an adjustment you'd make to try to fit something on a lot that doesn't fit. And that's why the increase of height happened. Um, because it clearly is a difficult site to fit this size building on for that number of students. Yes, it's always been a school site, but not a si-, a school of that mass and that many inhabitants, students and staff. That does create adverse impacts to this neighborhood. It, in my, um, review of these, uh, plans, there was not one natural organic space on the whole site any longer. Not one blade of grass, nothing. I don't even know if you guys have decided on trees. I, I'm not, i- if I missed that detail, I apologize. But you, the adverse impact of taking out green space in a neighborhood and substituting with hardscape is, uh, completely unjust, completely unjust, considering the, the impact to that neighborhood. Particularly with the, the limited open space resources that they have. I think this is their last. And that's not the same in any of our wards or neighborhoods. I don't think we can say that anywhere, that there's no green space in our neighborhood. That, that is an adverse impact. Height, the height increases the mass, increases the number of people you're gonna put in there and the impacts to the neighborhood. The, the, I, I, I know it's, you know, traffic in the sense of more people, more impact on the neighborhood. And it's absolutely intolerable that the, I've asked time and time again for the most modern tools and software to be utilized in these presentations to demonstrate to the public your circulations around these areas. And it's been denied. That is an adverse impact to the neighborhood.
Patty, we're pushing four minutes, just so you know.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. That was enough.
Thank you.
I hope your vote in your discussion tonight includes the discussions we've heard.
Thank you, Patty. All right, uh, up next, we have Rachel. Rachel, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Rachel O'Fallow, two twenty-five Bray Street.
Go ahead, thank you.
Hi, um, I've been a huge, um, supporter of this school project from the beginning. Um, and I did wanna speak in support of, um, voting for, um, going ahead with the project. Um, and I do understand that, you know, clearly, things do happen as projects go along, as they always do. I, just a few weeks ago, when we did a huge, um, school-wide, um, teacher appreciation event, did have the opportunity to go into, um, veterans and do, deliver whoopee pies to the teachers there with the whoopee pie wagon. And, um, I had been outside the school but never in the school. And I had been outside the school, but never in the school. My children attend West Parish. And as I'm standing in there, of course, you know, these kids are in a very different school than mine are. And I'm again reminded that these kids are in smaller spaces. There's kids learning in the hallway. They have a gym shared with a cafeteria. They're in conditions that I, you know, I did see when my son was originally at West Parish, but I no longer see. And that is why I support this project wholeheartedly. Because these are schools that needs replaced. And I think to me that I don't wanna lose sight of that. And that's why we're here, and that's why, you know, more than fifty percent of those voters did vote for this project to go ahead. And that's what I think we don't, we can't lose sight of. And that's the most important thing, is these kids, the safe environment, the learning, the, a safe space for them to do that. You know, the multitude of reasons why we did that. I understand it's a congested area. I understand, you know, the drawbacks that have been brought up by the folks. But I also understand that, to me, it's the children's education that has to come first. And, you know, people talk about that area and the children that live there. It will hugely impact those families in a positive way.
All right, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
All right. And we had Sue. I don't know if she has her hand down. I thought she tried to log on, it's something differently. I saw another Sue with her name up, but we do have a Sue down here, and I don't know if it's her, but I'm gonna promote her to a panelist and see if she'd like to speak. That way we give everybody a chance. Sue, can you hear me? Here we go, Sue. Well, you're on mute. Nope, you're still on mute.
Sue, bottom left of your computer, maybe, is the mute button.
Nope, she's having technical difficulties. I wish, I wish I had a button where I could unmute her here. We can't hear you, Sue.
She, I think she's saying, tell me the phone number.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so Sue, give an address for the record, please.
I don't have the number. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes. Can you hear us? All right, name it.
I can hear you.
Name an address for the record, please.
All right, my name is Susan Muse, and I live at twenty-two Mount Vernon Street for forty-five years.
Thank you, go ahead.
I am in opposition to the school, not to the building of a new school. I'm in opposition to the location currently being looked at. Mr. Blanchard made some good points. It is gonna be detrimental for the neighborhood. It is gonna cut off their view. They can say that they're gonna be able to see green trees. They're not gonna be able to see green trees. It's gonna cut their view of the green. We're losing the field, which is used daily. And the slides that Mr. Loomis showed, I think were very deceiving. The height is too great. I'm not against new school, and a matter of fact, I would love to see new schools built where they currently are. And I think it would be less expensive than what you're trying to do. How can you say this view won't change? That is the most ludicrous statement I've heard at this meeting tonight, especially if you're one of the homeowners or renters that live on Webster Street across the street. I do feel that showing, it shows the school with a lot of, width of a street, which I don't think is realistic either on that slide that was shown. And I also feel that the city council is applying for a special permit as a way of skirting the height issue for the variance on height. I just don't understand why they're going for a special permit instead of just asking for a height variance, which I think is too high. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for your patience with the phone and the audio.
No problem. So we just wanted to make sure we circled back to you. I saw you had your hand down, and I wanted to make sure you had your chance to speak, so. We appreciate your patience. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand. If you're calling on a phone, you can press star nine for the public hearing part of this. All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
Yes, we do. The communications that were forwarded to me. We have one letter of support from Larry Oaks for Clay Court. We have in opposition Mary Dome, Patty and Howie Amaral, and Denise Foley, and Carl Dwight Jr. He sent in three letters.
Okay, thank you, Joanna. All right, do we have any counselor questions? Counselor Gilman.
Counsel, thank you. I just have a slight point of order on the public hearing protocol. I'm wondering where, if we are gonna give the proponents an opportunity for rebuttal.
Yes.
And we haven't done that, and, you know, we did allow the opponents to speak again. And I think that there might have been a couple of things of clarification. So I leave that up to you.
We can circle back, my bad. I was more worried about Sue trying to get on so she could speak than.
I get it. It's funny to mention that, thank you.
Thank you. So we will have our rebuttals. So we actually have two more people that have raised their hands, so. That didn't before. So without objection, I'll allow these people to speak, if that's okay with everybody else. So that way we make sure everybody got their chance to speak.
Sure.
All right, CK, that's all we have, is two initials. Can you hear me? Right, I don't know if they have any technical difficulties. Two-letter CK, I don't know who your name or a phone number, it just says CK, so. All right, we're gonna proceed. So rebuttals, I'm gonna call on someone from the proponent. Superintendent Chairman Pope, would like to rebuttal anything?
I can talk to a couple of things that were stated incorrectly.
Go ahead.
And I'm sure Ben will have a few things to say. Number one, the issue about rooftop units and mechanicals that will go on the roof. There will be mechanicals that are on the roof, air conditioners, heating systems. They will not be on the section that is fifty-four feet high. They'll be on the forty-six-foot height section. And consequently, even if they're eight feet, they will still not exceed the fifty-four-foot height. Okay. The second one is that it was stated that the vote was not for this school, and it was. This school had, in June, or actually July of two thousand twenty, was the school that was approved by MSBA and by the school committee and by the, and it was the school that the citizens voted on. There was no other option. Now, the wording of the ballot question did not state that, and there are legal reasons for that, because it was a ballot question was to approve the authorization of increasing the tax levy to pay for the, pay for the bond of the school. But it was always the school. It was, there was no, it was clear, it was made clear, you know, continually about that. And the other thing that was not true, the ground level of the school, the new school, is at forty-eight feet. Okay? It's not, we're not filling in with, we're raising the average height from the existing building by two and a half feet, not by enough to bring it up to the level of Webster Street. You know, Michelle might be able to help me with this, but the elevation at the, at the, at the corner of Webster Street and Friends Street is sixty feet. So that is, you know, the bottom of the school will be at forty-eight feet, so. It's not the same. Ben, do you wanna add anything?
Thank you, John. The only thing I would add is that it was claimed during someone's comments that the height has been increased. The height has not been increased. I wanna be crystal clear about that. Anytime since the design has been, has been shared publicly, that's last, you know, June, July, September, August, going up until the votes by all the bodies and also the members of the public. So there's been no increase in height since the schematic design phase. And so there's been no increase in height since the voters voted.
All right, any other rebuttals from the proponent?
No, no rebuttal, but just.
Go ahead, John.
Saying from, you know, the override vote that was put out in front of the public was as required by MSBA.
Okay, thank you, John. Anybody else? All right, so a rebuttal to the rebuttal. So if anybody from the opposition would like to speak on any of those matters? Want to rebuttal? Patty, go ahead. One more time, name and address for the record, though, Patty.
Patty Amaral, fourteen Myrtle Square.
So, you know, it was forty-seven point seven to fifty-two or something as far as that vote concerned, but, you know, what are you gonna do about this? I'm just gonna tell you a quick story about a lady that I brought up to the voting poll that day to vote. She couldn't get out of her car. I know her. She's a resident of Gloucester. She couldn't get out of her car, and I had someone from City Hall help me get her up there. The whole time we were going up there, she was talking to me because she knows that I've been working to save Meadows Field, and she said she's there because she wanted to vote for that. So she gets up there, and it's a, because she couldn't hear or see, she has to have the questions talked, said to her. And so she has this question said to her. And, and you know, there was one, there was a lot of long ones, too. There was one about the right to repair, that was like five page longer.
Point of order, Mr. President. May I please ask Ms. Amaral, if you don't mind, this is about the height that we're looking at here.
Well, I was just trying to get to the vote part of it, where people were not sure of that question. When she got up, when she voted.
The election took place, so.
I understand, but she voted, then she was like. Oh, my gosh, she said, Patty, I'm so happy I got to vote for Meadows.
Mr. President.
You didn't vote for Meadows. And another thing that happened there also was that there was yes literature.
Patty, hold on one second. I put you on mute for one second. Counsel Holmgren, go ahead.
There is nothing to do with the height in what Ms. Amaral is saying. We are not discussing what took place in November. We are discussing the special permit applicant's application for the height of the building. I don't know what is happening, but this is, we're going off the rails here.
Point of order.
It's because other people have also done it. That's why I'm just going with what other people are doing. I'm not trying to do anything else, but the story is told. And there was also yes literature on tables up there. You know, we can't even go by that vote because a lot of people didn't understand it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry that they didn't.
This has nothing to do, Mr. President, really. This has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Okay, well.
Patty, so the rebuttals to the questions that were brought forth by the proponent, that's what we're rebutting. We're not bringing new things into the, interjecting new things into this. We are rebutting with Chairman Pope and Superintendent Loomis I spoke to. That's what a rebuttal is. So Counsel Holmgren is correct.
Well, yeah.
Rebuttal to the.
Well, you got me, okay? You got me good, so I don't know what to say. So that's what I, that's all I can say. I don't know what to say. It's one good for a person and another not good for another person. I don't understand the faness of any of this. And believe me, I've sat on all these boards, come on, think about it. Sat on Clean City, I've sat on Open Space Recreation Board, and they didn't even wanna touch this. They didn't wanna write a letter for me. Come on, now is this really fair?
This is a rebuttal.
Yeah, well, that's a rebuttal, that. This is not a fair process at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for everybody else that has their hand up, Patty was the lead speaker in the opening part. So she was the rebutterer. I'm not gonna call on everybody that spoke this evening to rebut the rebuttal. That's just not how we're working this. It was Chairman Pope and Superintendent Loomis were the two people that were the lead speakers for the proponent, and Patty was the lead speaker for the opponent. So I'm not gonna speak, call on everybody else for rebuttals this evening. All right, so we've gone through the public hearing part of it to the communications, and now we're on to counselor questions. Any counselor questions? Counselor Holmgren.
Yes, two-part question, if that's all right, through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
How long has the SHADOW study been on the website for people to examine? And how long has the website been up for the new school project?
We've had a new website for the new school project for years now. The latest incarnation was redone in, I think, December. But we've always had a website, a project website on our district website or linked from there. And that's where we've been keeping all the, all the documents related to the project, those we submit to MSBA, those presentations we've done in front of public bodies. In terms of the SHADOW study specifically, that went up the evening of, so last Wednesday, immediately after the P and D subcommittee meeting. So that's been there, and it's actually, I think, yeah, linked right from the, from the, the front page of that, I believe.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jen? Counselor Gilman?
Yeah, just an extra point of clarification, because it's a good question. We actually saw the initial SHADOW study at the first meeting on May fifth. And both Counsel Pat and Counsel Holmgren asked for a more detailed SHADOW study because they wanted different times of year, when the sun was at different levels. And then the applicant worked hard to come back to describe that to us and show that to us. And that's when we did that again last, on May or June second meeting is when we saw that. So I just wanted to be clear on that. And I did have a question on the SHADOW study. May I through the chair?
Please.
Thank you. So we didn't see the SHADOW study tonight. And I know at the June second meeting, there were only five counselors that were there. And I just wonder if it would be worth our while to ask either Michelle Rogers or Brad Door to show us the SHADOW study. We can do it, and it's about twenty seconds. But it's a major component to the height, and it might be a benefit for all the counselors to see. So just my suggestion, question.
I have.
Oh, go ahead.
Just a clarification on that, if I might, Mr. Chairman. If we're going to show the SHADOW study, again, it did get into much more detail upon our request. And I would ask that what they do, if you're going to allow it to be shown, that we show the longest day of the year, which is the June twenty-first date, and that we show it from five AM until, I think, nine PM or whatever time it ends. That would be the longest time to be able to see anything. That would be the date. And I think if I remember when they ran through the studies, they were able to adjust the speed so that one second of real time was one hour of actual time on the study.
So we do have Michelle Rogers and Brad Door from Doorwood here. Michelle or Brad, is it possible to throw up the shadow?
Michelle, I have it on my computer here, I can show it to you.
All right, yeah, thank you. All right. Yeah, thank you.
And I will also just, um, give you a moment to share this. While we're good, here we go. I just, I just also want to point out that this, what I'm going to show everyone is available right on the, the building project website, where it's a solar studies. I mean, this is available for everyone in the public to see. We'll show it right now, obviously, um, and happy to do, do so. Um, but anyone can play it as many times as they like. Uh, let me just get to the presentation here. Let me increase the size a little bit. So this is, um, we'll show, I'll show you two parts or two versions of the shadow study. This is from, uh, up above, obviously, bird's eye view. This is on June twenty-first. Um, so it goes from five AM to nine PM. Each one second is an hour in real time. I can stop it along the way. Uh, so you see it's dark now at five AM on, on June twenty-first. Uh, it isn't pitch black, obviously, because, uh, it's already getting light. So I'll run this and you'll see. So you're already seeing, let me back this up a little bit. You're already seeing the, as the sun rises, uh, the, the shadow from the building is, uh, towards the bottom of it, below it in a sense. It's basically, uh, just, uh, barely touching the, um, the, uh, houses across the property, their front stoops. Uh, that goes pretty quickly and pulls away from the houses as the sun continues to ru- rise. Uh, we enter, you know, around noon, uh, you know, midday here. Sun is overhead and then, uh, as the sun goes to the western sky, the shadows extend, um, towards um, the, uh, you know, the, the highway essentially. See if I can back this up a little bit and stop it. To this point, they're extending this way towards the highway and towards the back of the property. I can show that one more time if that's helpful. So they, just after sunrise, you see the, already see the sun, the shadows receding from Webster Street. Sun continues overhead. And then the shadow begins to grow here. You can see it right here. And then continues to extend, stretches beyond. I think it's sundown, basically. The next version of this is, um, looking at the building. Uh, we ignore the lights. We don't expect those gym lights to be on at five o'clock in the morning. No one will be there. Um, so again, same timeframe, uh, each one second is an hour. You'll see now that this is at sunrise. Uh, all the shadows are to the left of the buildings. These are the ones from the houses. These are the ones from the, from the school itself. They're receding quickly from Webster, being on Webster Street just after sunrise. They pull further and further away from the houses on, and Webster Street. Rotate, oh, sun rotates over the building and they start extending and they're extending across the, you can see extending across the parking lot here. They're not approaching these buildings that are, um, on, um, uh, on Eastern Avenue. And then it's dark. Okay. Uh, is that sufficient? Like, anything, should I show that again or?
I'm fine with it. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so for everybody that has their hand up as attendees, we're on our counselor question part of the public hearing part of this. We've already gone through the public part of this. So, um, we're going to proceed with the counselor questions. Uh, Counselor O'Hara.
Thank you. Um, just a quick question of, of, uh, Mr. Loomis. Um, he just mentioned as far as in the, in the light shadow study that the lights would be off in the gym. Um, is this in fact true? I, I know the lights at West Parish are on all the time. I'm, it's not, I'm just keep more curious if in fact this would be operated differently than West Parish, which the lights are on twenty-four seven.
So the lights on, the lights on, um, in modern buildings are there, just very minimal lighting, uh, security lighting. I know in the past, there's been some, um, some errors in terms of the timing of lights at West Parish. Those have been remedied and, and and my understanding is that the lighting and maybe Brad, you can add, add to this is just a very minimal lighting for security only. We don't like, uh, you know, completely dark buildings in terms of, uh, safety. Um, but also any lighting from the building will be shaded, um, from the streets and from the neighbors. And exterior lighting like the, the, if there's any, um, uh, lights on the outside of the building, those are shaded, um, from the neighbors. In terms of interior lighting, what we expect is only, uh, minimal safety lighting. Brad, anything to add to that?
Well, that's correct. What you're trying to do is, is you have code required safety lighting for egress stairs, et cetera. So
Brad, we're talking, we're going to, we're Counselor O'Hara, we're talking about height here.
Um, not the No, I, I, I understand. And that's, thank you. That's fine.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to, um, Counselor Gilman forwarded me a letter, an email of a question that I put forward. Um, it came from Michelle Rogers. I just want to, um, not so much clarify, but validate, um, the exist, and again, this is from Michelle.
It's not really related to height.
This is related to height, Counselor Gilman. Height, height has a direct relation to, in this case, cubic footage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you. So the existing school as such on, uh, Webster Street is, from what I understand from the email, is ninety thousand four hundred and sixty-one cubic feet. And the proposed school is, um, per the email is one million six hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-nine cubic feet. Is that correct?
No, I, I don't, I know the cubic feet of the existing school. What I gave you was the square footage of the proposed school is ninety thousand four hundred and sixty-one. That's square footage, not cubic.
It's not cubic footage?
No, I gave you
I'll look at the email again. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the million number was the cubic square feet.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any other counselor questions? Counselor McCarthy?
Yes, uh, this would probably be for Mr. Door. Um, the matter before us tonight is height. It's not whether there is a school going there or not going there. And I, I'd like him to equate, um, the height as the effect that I would have on traffic.
So Counselor McCarthy, I, I think that's, it's almost a two-part answer there. The first part is with respect to trips. The building height really has no effect. Uh, I would suggest that with respect to traffic, you know, right in front of the site or being able to get in and out of the site, that the three-story building is preferable because what that allows over a, a, a lower building, because what that allows us to do is have more onsite queuing space to allow us to be able to get more cars off of Webster Street and onto, uh, the site proper. So I think the three-story building actually works to our advantage with respect to traffic in that regard. I hope that answers your question.
It does. And, and like I say, that's, that's the matter before us tonight is height. So that's why I wanted it equated to the traffic, not whether the school going there is going to cause more traffic. So thank you for answering that.
Thank you, John. Any other counselor questions? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and refer this out to our Planning and Development Chair, Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. On a motion by Counsel Holmgren, seconded by Counsel Pat, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council grant to the city of Gloucester School Department a special council permit, SCP two thousand twenty-one oh oh two, for the property located at Webster Street, number eleven, Assessor's Map forty-seven, Lot thirteen in the R twenty district pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance, section one point ten point one and three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty-five feet for the new East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School to be fifty-six point five feet for a total height increase of twenty-one point five feet over thirty-five feet. The permit is based on the basis of the plans and elevations dated March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one and submitted to the city clerk on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, entitled overall exterior elevations drawn by Door and Whittier Architects, Inc., two sixty Merrimack Street, Newburyport, Mass. Subject to new information and/or debate that results from the public hearing, this special council permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been moved by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Holmgren. Um, and we're going to have council discussion. Uh, but before we have council discussion, I just want to go over a couple of bullet points before we vote this evening. So, uh, under, uh, the criteria for three point one point six C, um, our vote, we should include the following. And you should explain yourself of why you're voting in favor or in opposition. Uh, is the increase in allowable height consistent with the neighborhood character? So that should be included in your vote, whether in favor or in opposition. Uh, and will this permit not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood because of the obstructions of view? Uh, with this permit will not be substantially detrimental to the overshadow, shadowing um, of other properties. Will this special council permit not be sustainable? Uh, substantially detrimental to the neighborhood because of the impairment of utilities and other adverse impacts and any other comments on the height, uh, permit before I call the roll call. So when we vote this evening, we should include some of these answers, uh, in our vote. And just to make sure everybody, so now we're in counselor discussion. Um, I don't want to draw a straw poll right now. So if we want to have the discussion of when we vote and before that, I, I just don't want to get into the weeds of a straw poll, a poll and what we're going to do before. Um, Counselor Gilman?
Yes, may I just take a moment to do my narrative for
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to say a couple of things before we physically voted.
Okay, perfect. Um, so tonight, as Counselor LeBlanc articulated, um, we're here to consider a special council permit for building height and access of section three point two limits, section B of three point one six. Um, may be authorized by special council permit by the city council. And the said permit in allowable height is, and I won't repeat that because Counsel LeBlanc already articulated that, but I want to summarize by saying, um, planning and development met three times on May fifth, two thousand twenty-one, on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and again on June second, two thousand twenty-one. We also held two site visits to view height polls as it relates to the height requirements. Although Mass General Law on open meeting laws does not require site visits to be posted, we did, did decide to invite a butters. Um, the first site visit, we walked around with flyers and the second site visit, we not only walked around with flyers, we interpreted them in Spanish and, um, Portuguese as well. Uh, thanks to, to Counsel Holmgren on the language interpretation and Counsel Cox for helping me deliver those for the first site visit. Um, so I just wanted to comment that, um, these site visits, particularly the one on, on, uh, May twenty-seventh, were well attended, probably ten to fifteen. Um, not just the butters, but residents, all, each one. And, um, and I scribed every question. And I have to say that Door Whittier, um, Door and Whittier did, um, and the superintendent and Jonathan Pope did a phenomenal job answering all those questions. The question and answer for those who, I know counselors have watched the video, the Zoom and have read the, the minutes, but the questions were incredibly detailed on every single question. And, um, you know, I feel that that makes me feel comfortable that we're ready to move forward. Um, in addition, in this, I have to be, um, state that, um, Tracy O'Neil was part of this, which was great. Um, she was one of the neighbors that attended the first site visit and she asked, um, many questions about the, um, elevation as it, as it pertained to how much fill we were going to be moving up. And as a result, um, the applicant came up with a phenomenally detailed color coding system to put on the two poles that were there. So we could understand the variance in how much fill we were going to be raising up. Um, and that information is still there. So anyone that wants to go and see this, as long as you're not there when school's in sight, um, that information is still there. And it's also, um, the, the diagram is in our packet. So I just wanted to say that um, I believe that we did an incredibly thorough job answering each and every person's question. It's all documented. You can watch the Zoom meetings of those three meetings and you can also read the minutes, which are very thorough. And we approved the one from June second tonight. And it's been on the website for a couple of days as well. So I appreciate that. And at this point, um, I do, um, send the me, the conversation back to Counsel LeBlanc and, um, whenever you're ready to ask counselors to, um, discuss, I'm, I'm prepared to do so. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do we have any other counselor discussion? Counselor Menard.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, I'd just like to start out by, uh, recognizing and appreciating the passionate advocacy of Patty Amaral and the, the softball league and all the other people who've spoken so clearly about their concerns on this project because, uh, they've, they've done a wonderful job and I can only respect, uh, their voices. Uh, that said, I, I think that we need to move ahead with this wonderful asset for the community and the children of our, our city. Uh, I think that the shadowing study, which was just reshown again, addresses any issue about, uh, shadowing by the building. It reflects the topography, that the fact is that the site is lower than Webster Street. Uh, I do not believe that it's out of character with the neighborhood. And, uh, particularly the setbacks, the, the school being a hundred and twenty-four feet back now from Webster Street really, uh, reduces the doc, the domination of, of what is a large building on the, on the surrounding neighborhood. And, uh, I think it is consistent accordingly with the, uh, character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other counselor discussion? Uh, Counsel McCarthy, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
And then Counsel Gilman.
Yes, um, I'm on record as saying that I didn't think this was the best place to put the school. However, that's not what's before us tonight. The matter before us tonight is height. I, I actually took a ride over to, uh, West Parish to look at the school today and it, and it, it, it is aesthetically pleasing. I think the, the building that's there now for the view of the neighbors, the, the old Wad Two School, a veteran's school, uh, it, it really is not a, a, a great view. I think moving, as Counsel Menard just said, moving the building back over a hundred feet more than it is now from the road is going to create a different view. Um, I heard someone say that you you're going to miss the, uh, the sounds of the kids going to school and back. Well, I hear them every day going by my house. We're going to miss that. And I think the neighborhood over there is going to be lucky to have that. Um, like I say, I, I do think there are issues with, with the school being there, but that's not what we're here for tonight. We're here tonight as to utilities, overshadowing views, neighborhood character. Um, there's a school there now. There's going to be another school there. So, um, as much as I, I voted against this project in the beginning, I cannot vote tonight um, negatively because of what's before us tonight. And, and that's how the height affects it. Thank you.
Good, John. Um, Counselor Gilman and then Counselor Holmgren and then, uh, Counselor O'Hara and then Cox. Counselor Gilman?
Thank you. So in looking over the four components of what is in front of us under three point one point six B, um, will this permit not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, um, because of view obstruction? Um, so the height of the tallest point, which is a clear story lobby area, provides daylight into the main corridor of the new building and is only sixteen feet wide and ninety feet long. The administrative arts area is forty feet high with a majority of the rest of the building about seventy-seven percent, including the academic wing, is forty-six feet or lower. And so as we look at this for the height tonight, which is And so as we look at this for the height tonight, which is, we're looking for that one section, the fifty-six point five, and we wanna keep that in mind. Will this permit not be substantially detrimental to the overshadowing of other properties? In December, there was virtually no shadowing impact through Webster Street. And at five-thirty, there may be a little bit of shadow at the slope of the abutters across the street, but by six AM, the shadowing was gone. The building is set back further than the existing school, and that creates a better buffer. Right now, the existing school is thirty feet from Webster Street, and now the distance under the dimension table for how far it is height in that front area is a hundred and twenty-four feet. The building setback further existing school creates a better buffer. I already said that, I'm sorry. Will the special council permit not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood because of impairment of utilities or other adverse impacts? Just some of the things that I'm passionate about that I've heard in the presentations is that all overhead wires will be removed, and all new service electrical phone data will be underground. So improvements in the utilities, no utility easements exist currently on the property, or will exist on the property or are existing in the property, and no impact to utilities due to the height of the proposed building. And then finally, in terms of the height consistent with the neighborhood character, the house on the corner of Friend and Webster Street, where the tallest house sat approximately fifty feet to the roof peak, and Michelle Rogers was very clear when we discussed this, that her numbers are plus or minus possibly a foot, and she was very clear that she was estimating in that the highest point of the proposed building in the house has elevation of sixty feet, with the proposed building of forty-eight feet. So I just wanted to mention that. So those are my comments in terms of the requisite criteria that's in front of us under three-point-six B, and I just wanted to share that with Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Belle. Counsel Holmgren?
Yes, thank you. I do want to piggyback on what Counselor Gilman said with relation to the utilities of the building. This building is going to be LEED certified, and in fact, I did confirm this at P and D. It will be more stringently examined than West Parish, which was LEED certified when it was built. I can only imagine that that will have a positive impact on the neighborhood and the community itself, especially since we are a green community, and our Clean City Commission and Community Development Department have worked very hard to update school utilities to the best of their ability. I will speak to the building envelope, because certainly the clear story is part of that, and I will say I am supporting it for the reasons that have already been stated, as well as its positive impact as far as the environment goes.
Thank you, Jen. Counselor O'Hara, then Cox, then Pat.
Thank you. I wanna thank everyone for their efforts, the P and D and the school committee, Doran Whittier. I will not be supporting this tonight. I do not believe that the building is in character with the neighborhood, and I do believe it will also be extremely detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Counselor Cox, and then Counselor Pat.
Thank you. I wanna start off by also showing my appreciation to P and D, the school committee, and Doran Whittier. I think everybody has been very, very thorough. Belle, without you being chair, I worry about some of the processes. So you are very thorough, and I appreciate that. As far as neighborhood character, I think with the new school that there will be more improvements to the neighborhood than negative impact, mainly because of the fact that the height is going to provide more land for the traffic to flow better. As far as the view, the current view is a building that's not gonna change. And the overshadowing, I find no large negative impact with that. And moving the utilities underground is, it's huge for the area in which we live in. So having that ability to do so is also a benefit. I will be voting for this.
Thank you, Melissa. Counsel Pat?
Yes. A few of these things in support of this application tonight. The overshadowing, again, on June twenty-first, the very longest day of the year, at literally at sunbreak, the shadows touch the foundations of two houses within a half an hour that's totally gone. There is no other impact by shadowing. The views, as most have said, there's a school there now. There's going to be, hopefully, there's going to be a school in the future. The views from the first floor of many of the Webster Street homes may, you know, have a slightly less distant view of some of the shrubs that are on the other side of Route one-twenty-eight. If you're on the upper side of Webster Street, maybe there's a little less view from that portion of what's now Meadows Field. If you're on the lower end, there's actually gonna be an increased view because of the new parking and area and the turnaround egress to take the traffic off the streets. So it'll be an improved view. Again, there's a school there now. There'll be a school in the future. I think many, as Counsel Cox pointed out, many of the improvements are going to take the traffic off of the street. That's gonna improve the neighborhood and the neighborhood character. I think we will obviously have to look at traffic as we get closer to doing it and see what we can do to help traffic in the neighborhood. And then maybe when the school is built, maybe we have to make some adjustments as have been made in other schools. But this plan shows a tremendous concern for the neighbors, for those traffic patterns, et cetera, even for the walking patterns, when some people were concerned about the park and the ten parking spaces, and it was only gonna be six or eight now. That's because they're now parallel parking, so there's a sidewalk. So the kids and the families can actually walk up and down Webster Street on the sidewalk. Those are the types of improvements. And with that, the the height that we're gonna vote for tonight, I think, is very important to continue the progress and very important for the future education of the next few generations yet of our kids in this city, and I'll be supporting it.
All right. Thank you, Barry. We have myself and Counselor Nolan left. Sean, do you wanna speak before I do?
On the height, I don't see the height being an issue the way that the grade is for the building where it is now versus the rest of the neighborhood. I don't see height being an issue in anything that would determine me to vote against this. As far as a view, again, grade has a lot of issues, and there's a school there now, and you're gonna see a school. And then the view that you're gonna see is gonna be much more beautiful. There's, there is gonna be more things for people to do in the playgrounds, and the view that you have above the school is still almost gonna be the same as what you have now. It's not gonna change much other than skyline and some trees. Shadowing, I think that we've definitely proved beyond a doubt that the shadow is not gonna be an issue with this. So that's definitely something that I think is not a problem. And utilities, they don't even get better. The school's gonna use less energy for people than it is now. The neighborhood is set up for the sewer water. Moving the power lines and everything underground is also a plus. So on those four criteria, I will be supporting this. But I also wanna say that being in Ward Five and working with a lot of the parents in Ward Five, there's a noticeable difference in what West Parish is now and what it was. And a gift that we can give to our students is to give them the proper learning space and adequate space for them to be in. It's healthy, it's more environmentally friendly, and it definitely provides her a better learning skill. And I can talk about parents that have had children in the old school and the new school, and the difference is incredible, both great educations. But if we can make it easier for children to be educated and be private about needs that they may have, then this is just a blessing for the neighborhood. And they'll see it sooner or later, but I will be supporting this tonight. And thank you to the school committee and planning and development. You guys did an unbelievable job. Unbelievable.
Thank you, Sean. Well said. I'm gonna piggyback on everybody here. You know, consistent with the neighborhood, I can remember playing up at Caesar's my whole youth, every little, every sport we could. There are several buildings on, not only on Webster Street, that are pretty tall, but going up Friend Street, there are also a few. So characteristic of the neighborhood is consistent. The shadowing, obviously, isn't a, isn't a, an issue at all. The obstruction of views, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. You can be in the woods and think you've got a magnificent view. You could be at downtown Boston, looking at the skyline, looking at the buildings, thinking you've got an amazing view. So beauty is in the eye of the beholder of a view. The utilities, obviously, it's a major upgrade. And what else? I think that's it for me, you know? So I think we've gone through everything. If there's nothing else anybody would like to say, during council, so we're still in council discussion. I am ready to call for the roll call if there's nothing else. Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Cox. My apologies.
No worries. I just wanted to add something because it's really bugging me a little bit. I've been on the council for ten years. The first year that I voted on something, I was told that I was going to ruin the character of Gloucester. Counsel Blank, you're well aware of what I'm talking about. It's about the hotel. It has been a tremendous asset to our city. So, you know what, I'm sorry that some people think that we are ruining the character of Gloucester. And maybe in ten years, we'll know how this plays out, but I am certainly comfortable in my vote from ten years ago, allowing the hotel to move forward. And I'm as comfortable with moving forward with the school vote as I am tonight. So I'm sorry that some people think that we are ruining the character of Gloucester, but I think we are doing everything we can to make it better.
Well said, Counsel Cox. Anybody else before we motion to the Counselor Gilman?
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to speak twice. I wanted to give a shout out to the building committee. I just noticed that Joe Lucido is still on the call, and he represented Public Works on the building committee, and it's been a long night. I'm sure he went to work at around six-thirty this morning, maybe earlier. But Building Committee, City Administration, including John Dunn, Chip Payson, the mayor, there's just been, not, not, you know, but we've already given kudos to Superintendent Lemus and Jonathan Pope and members of the school committee. But it's just, you know, we've, we've really been incredibly detailed with this, and it's really appreciated because the questions that came up from people in the community are passionate, and, and it's, and I think we're better counsel as we've been able to get through some of these questions, and I appreciate that. So thanks for letting me say that before our roll call. Appreciate it.
All right. Ready for the roll call, everyone? So we understand what we're voting on this evening, height exception for the school. All right, Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel of Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Me and myself, Counsel of LeBlanc. Yes. Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one opposed. Counsel Holmgren?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to move to reconsider this vote.
Second.
All right, motion to reconsider has been made by Counselor Holmgren and seconded by Counselor Gilman and Memhard. All right, everybody understand the reconsideration? All right, Counsel McCarthy?
No.
Counsel Memhard?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor Pat?
No.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Gilman?
No.
Counselor Holmgren?
No.
And Counsel LeBlanc? No. Motion to reconsider passes on, fails on a roll call vote of zero in favor, nine opposed. All right, great job, everyone. I know it's tough to listen to people in opposition and see them on the streets, but we have to remember that we also represent people that don't reach out to us, and they're making sure that we're doing things for them without them having to communicate with us. I know the school passed through the ballot question by, whether it was by a slim margin or by a huge margin, it still passed. And that's what we have to do as a city, is represent what the majority of the voters have, just like with any other democratic process that we do, not only in the city, but the United States. And this was tough for all of us this evening. Our kids deserve better. And going through some of these schools over the past several months, touring them, to see these kids in hallways and the cafetorium, or whatever we wanna call it, and everything else that goes on in these tiny little schools that are, that are way older than myself, it's gonna be nice to be able to see these kids get an education that they need in the places that they need to do it. So hopefully, my grandchild that we had will be able to enjoy one of these new schools that we're building. All right, so like I said, great job, everyone, and we will move forward. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business, but discussion only, city council discussion regarding resuming in-person meetings.
All right, so as we know, shut my air conditioner off so I can hear a little better. As we know, the governor has lifted the restrictions and everything, so we're pretty much back to normal. We've had some discussion on, from some constituents, that they're able to attend these meetings. So I know how I feel. I could go either way, in person or stay remote, but and we're not gonna vote on anything tonight. We're just gonna open it up to discussion. But a couple of things we have to do is work with the administration on getting a location where we can do it. And if we do go back to the auditorium, and then also the time change, because since we've been doing these remotely, we've started at six PM rather than seven PM. So we may have to go back to the seven PM start if we do meet in person. So Counsel Pat, I see you have your hand up first. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just a thought process, obviously, we've had some difficult times, and we've gone through a process here using the Zoom meetings, and many others have, and some haven't been able to do so. But, and I think it was pointed out by many of the callers in some cases that they were able to participate, and they had never been able to participate before, at least they didn't feel they could. Maybe they couldn't make it to City Hall or whatever. And I'm just wondering whether, what the legal process is with state statutes and our own Gloucester statutes, and whether we would need to look at them. And if we do go back to live in-person meetings, whether we'd be able to have Zoom participation in those meetings? And if so, you know, how is that, how is that funded? In other words, is that something the IT department has to pick on? Does, does our, I don't know if Joanne will ever Does does our, I don't know if Joanne will ever speak to me again if we. Added that as another requirement without adding another couple of employees or something. But I'm just wondering whether we could, if there's a way that we might be able to do. You know, like that hybrid thing of both in-person and being able to. You know, have Zoom participants, and I'm just wondering if we can look at that in some fashion, not hold up the process of getting. You know, say back to going live, but I think it's been very productive to have. Some people participate where they didn't before, and if we could look at, you know. Somehow including that and find out whether that's a legal process. And how, for that matter, it would be funded, obviously, not for unfunded mandates, you know, per se.
Thank you, Barry. Obviously, we're not going to know all the answers this evening and we're not going to figure this out tonight. But it just opens the door for this discussion, so we can ask these questions and figure out. It's probably going to take a couple of meetings for us to figure out what we want to do and how we're going to do it. But I think the school committee is doing this for and their funding is like $2,000 for the year or something like that to do the. Their Zoom and they're going to, I think they're going to keep doing it. But like I said, this just opens the door for this discussion. Council Holmgren?
I agree with Counselor Pat, and if it's a question of cost, I I mean, can we take it out of our own council budget? Please don't shoot me dirty looks, but this has done wonders for accessibility. We've had, we've never had this many attendees consistently. And I want to keep that up. I really do.
Thank you, Jen. Counselor Gilman?
I am so eager to get back to real meetings, so eager. However, I also think that there's been a tremendous advantage of the Zoom protocol. The presentations are more clear. The audio is much more clear for people to hear and see. We get to watch the meetings again, which is so helpful. Even even in meetings that I chair, you know, it's just very, very helpful to sit down and watch it again. It also allows me to self-assess, you know, when it when it maybe I'm talking too much or something, which I know is sometimes so. But so in, you know, I don't want to steal the thunder, but I did sit in the budget meeting when we were talking a little bit about this. So I'll let Counselor Cox speak to that, but I think we do have some headway. But I will say no more. I do have a question, Council of Blank, on what you sent around today. Which is the document from the. An act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency. Sponsors are Senator Brownsberger. I did read this and my question is. It appears that the the bullet that's talked about here, it says it allows a moderator in a town. Having a representative town meeting form of government to request a town meeting be held through remote participation, including but not limited to. By means of a video or telephone conferencing platform until December 15th, 2021. I'm just wondering if that is similar to cities and if there is an issue that we're going to need to rally around to get permission to do this. If this is something we decide to do. So I did enough talking now that you know how I self-assess when I watch Zoom. And I know Council Cox had her hand raised, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Counselor Cox.
Since Val was sitting in on our budget meetings this year. She is well aware that we have been talking about it with the IT department and the administration on adding this in. So we can do a hybrid. I don't think that that is out of the question. It's very little money and our IT Director Ryan Knowles has also agreed that he doesn't think that it's going to be much effort. So he is on our revisit list tomorrow, so we will be discussing that further with him. And you're right, the the money is it's short money. Which I think is actually more than what we have in our council budget, so. I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't take it from there. But we we are planning for that for July 1. So I do think that with the legislation that's still out there and the quality of the building that we have our meetings in. That we should be assessing that with the administration to maybe provide some other kind of workstation instead of the dais. But it's it's something that we where we can still social distance. I don't know whether my colleagues have all had their vaccination and I I don't think that needs to be discussed here. But you know, I I think we still need to take some precautions, even with the vaccine, we can still get COVID. I have several people that I'm acquainted with that has have had their vaccine and still come down with COVID. So I think there's still a lot of precautions that we need to take. And putting a lot of people in that building is still putting people in danger. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, anybody else? Council Memhard.
I'd just like to thank Patty Page for some of the input she's made on this particular issue. In terms particularly of of accessibility and ADA access to our meetings. City Hall, for better or for worse, it's a beautiful building, but it it's challenging for many people to attend. Public meetings there and the Zoom platform and operating remotely is clearly something that has a broad benefit in terms of. Audience participation and accessibility in many, many ways for our citizens to participate in the public process. It's been an interesting ride, but I think we've all learned from it. And, you know, I look forward to the time we can be meeting in person again. But in the meantime, the Zoom platform that the city has helped promote and allow us to use now for better part of 13, 14 months. Since last February, it's been a remarkable technological vehicle for us to continue to meet and express our opinions and our concerns. And have the public be a part of this process. So yes, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else like to speak on this matter? All right. So we'll keep going remotely until for another month or so and then bring it up again. That's all. We'll just keep plugging away remotely and till we bring it back up and want to discuss this again and figure things out. Maybe things will be better in a in a month or two. Counselor McCarthy?
Steve, one thing, I mean, I've never been the host of a meeting and question for you really. If if we're taking input both from live people, wherever the venue may be. And trying to take input via electronic, is that going to be difficult for you running a meeting?
I could do it. It would just, it would just be a matter of trying to get a pecking order. Like during the public hearing, people come in and they want to stand up and they want to speak. I have a pecking order here, like right now I got my attendees list and I can go down and once they raise their hand. They automatically come up to the top and I'll go down the list. So it would be just a matter of a pecking order on, do I take a couple from the public that are in in person? And then a couple from the online, you know what I mean? So it would just be my discretion on how I want to do it. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem doing it. I mean, Joanne, Joanne can tell you, she can see exactly what I do. And I wouldn't have a problem.
And we did.
Live or or, you know, if we had to do both, John, I I wouldn't have a problem doing it.
Right, we did talk to Ryan about that BNF in the budget hearing about installing like hardware. At the DS and and, you know, microphones and maybe cameras, so that you didn't have to be dependent on, you know, the laptop for the bulk of us. But you would have to still be using that. So he was looking into hardware and and those issues too, he told us, so.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I I wouldn't have a problem doing it. It would just be a matter of me. Looking out into the audience, speaking to whoever's there and then looking at whoever's online. So like I said. I I'm not intimidated by it one bit. Council Holmgren, I mean, Counselor Gilman, I'm sorry.
Thank you for again allowing me to speak for the second time. So on the, at the Essex North Shore Tac, of which I represent Gloucester, and Joe Marino is the Director of IT. Gloucester's very own Joe Marino. He, we have been doing the hybrid model for about four months. And it's a combination of people listening in from home. And people, most of us, probably 90% of us being there in person. And I think some of the things you really do have to look at is the technology. Because we always have a big screen on both sides of the room that we're in. And the big screen allows people that are there to to also watch the clarity of the presentation there. As well as the people that are on the call. And and Joe has offered to help us with whatever we needed, but I'm sure Ryan knows the same contacts that. You know, that are in the industry, but it it's it's been, it's been a good process for us. And I've never been afraid of being in the room where we're in because we're we're always quite cautious of how close we are to people. And but you've got to figure that out as well in our in our setups that we have. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anybody else? All right, Joanne, can we put this on a meeting, I don't know, end of July or something like that? We'll just bring it back up and see how it goes. And at one point, you know, we we may end up having to go live again, maybe not this council, but you know, a future council. But let's put it out there for discussion again and and see what the the flavor is of everybody. I do agree, agree with what everybody said with the accessibility for outside people to be home and attend the meetings. I know that I would attend a lot more meetings if I I was be able to do it remotely rather than. You know, dragging my butt down the city hall and lugging up the stairs and sitting, I'm sure, I'm sure it's very pleasant in that auditorium tonight. While I'm sitting next to my air conditioner. I know, I'm sure we don't miss that, right, Sean, with the fans? So all right, we'll we'll bring it back up at at a meeting at the at the end of July. And then we'll have another conversation. That'll give us six weeks, whatever it is, eight weeks. All right, and then the next item on the agenda, Joanne, please.
It's discussion only for special events and I just.
I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, so I just wanted to update the council that since the governor lifted the restrictions. The city has allowed for applicants to apply for special events. We've launched a new viewpoint, online viewpoint system, but we are still meeting in person. They're still requiring street closures. Last Thursday, we had 24 events on our agenda and we approved 23 of them. One is going to be continued to to our next meeting. We have some events that are being. That we have an online application that would need street closures before July. So we are going to put those events on the next city council agenda. And Counselor Gilman has agreed to do a special P and D. So that we could go through the process to get these up, the events approved and up and running for the July, the month of July. That needs, and then the other events will be at a regular meeting, at a July meeting. So I just wanted to update the council and last year you requested that all events due to COVID would. Come to City Council for vote, so I just want to make sure that you do not want to request that again. Since the restrictions are lifted.
No, I don't think we need to do it since the the ban's been lifted and that everything's back to, we're trying to get back to as normal as usual. When we did that, when we enacted that, it was more of gatherings of people and there's no restrictions on gathering. So I don't see why we would have to vote on certain things. So I don't have a problem with it, I'm sure, you know. Okay with. Looks like everybody else is on board, so do we have to do it in a form of a of a motion at some point?
No, you just requested it. It was just a request, so you did not vote on it.
So, yeah, I think you did.
Okay, so the only thing I wanted to mention is because of the opening, we've had a marathon of applications. So we're trying to accommodate everyone, but we want to make sure it goes through the process. So that's why we're kind of like on the next meeting going to put things on the, we can approve the application. Through the CAC online, but it would still have to go to P and D. So we're asking that applicants be patient and we just want everybody to go through the process and have a fair process for everyone.
Thank you, Joanne. Hold on a sec, and I mean, I I know we were getting the the emails for the applications or that the the agenda for the special. Special Events Committee, can can we send those out? Because I know there's some councils that would like to attend. If there's something going on in their ward, if they want to bring up an issue or ask questions, so. Anything more for, just want to send us the agenda to these special events meetings, so that way we can pick and choose which ones we, the board counselors or the large, large would like to attend.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. Bill?
Just to simplify things, Council Holmgren and Pat, we were hoping for a special meeting on Wednesday, June 30. Just a short one to to kind of pick up what comes off the consent agenda at the next meeting. And that way we'll be covered for events that have a street closure for that first week in July by having that extra meeting. If you can't attend, Jen, Barry and I can do it, just the two of us. We can get an alternate, but I just think, you know, the that day is a good day because that's typically when we meet and Joanne had brought that up as a possibility. So we can talk the details, but I'm just kind of throwing it out there. Thank you.
I've got it on my schedule and I know, I think Jen's going to be away camping if I'm not correct.
Yeah, and that'll give us enough time, Joanne, to post it and we'll 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 get you an alternate, Bill.
Great, thank you.
All right, awesome discussion, everyone. Appreciate that. And that's why we, you know, we're a good council. We try to discuss everything together and make decisions together. So, Joanne, can we have the next order of business, please?
It's Council request to the mayor.
All right, so I am going to go right down the list from roll call. Counsel McCarthy.
I have none this evening. Thank you.
All right, Council Memhard.
I just have one. Bringing back the administration and the council, our recently enacted beach neighborhood, non-resident parking regulations. Many of our residents in the neighborhoods, the beaches, especially with this good weather already, are very grateful and appreciative of our measure there. I am however getting feedback relating to some tweaking and adjustments, which is probably only natural in a process like this. And I'm sure others are as well, but specifically residents on St. Louis Avenue and on Edgemore Road, both of which are private roads. Have asked for the resident-only designation to be removed in terms of signage and our ordinance. And we're also continuing to evaluate the visibility of not of 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 non-resident parking on the northerly side of Farrington Avenue. In terms of access to Niles Beach. So we're going to be working to perhaps tweak some of these recently enacted regulations. And make sure they're consistent with the desire of the neighborhood and as effective as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor Nolan.
I have more of a thank you to the administration and the DBW. They did a great job on paving on Concord Street and Atlantic Street. They've widened it. It's made it much safer to take the list. And I I'm really appreciative. It was money well spent. And although people probably sat in traffic a little bit this weekend, at least they sat in traffic on a wide, safer road. That emergency vehicles and bicyclists could still get by. And I can't thank the administration, the DPW enough for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Counselor O'Hara.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Counselor Pat.
Nothing for the administration, but just for everybody, just for info, if you're not able to get in touch with me in the next day or so. I go in in the morning for my breathing implant at Mass General. So I may be out of touch for a day or or two, but I'll be hopefully back and. Ready to go in like 36 hours or something like that.
If you needed anything, Barry, reach out, bud. So I'm sure anybody. So I'm sure anybody, anybody on here will give you a hand. Counselor Cox?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, I'm going to skip over Val, because usually we go last. Counsel Holmgren?
Yes, no request to the mayor, but two things. Both of our farmers markets are up and running. I'm so excited. Gloucester has two farmers markets. We're so lucky. So the Cape Town Farmers Market is every Thursday from 3:00 to 6:30 at Harbor Loop. They accept EBT cards and SNAP. And Magnolia Farmers Market is on Lexington Avenue every Sunday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And they also have a virtual market in case you don't want to be among people yet, or if you can't. So, thanks.
We skipped over Val. I don't even see her on here anymore. Oh, maybe she's on her phone. Hold on a second. Val, is this you? Val? I don't know if that's her or not. We have, we have a caller with their hand up, so.
He has her hand up.
Yeah, I just promoted her to, let me see if I can. There's nothing else I can do. No. Ask to unmute. Let me, let me check my phone real quick. Oh, Val, is this you?
Yes.
All right, there we go. What happened?
I guess I froze up. I really have nothing to say except thank you, counselors, for tonight. And also to the mayor and her administration for all your support on particularly 11 Webster Street. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right.
And I froze.
That's fine. I figured it was you on the call. All right, great job, everyone. I know we have some tough decisions that we do up here. Everybody did a great job, great job tonight, and I don't have any requests to the mayor. Just kudos to the administration, the police department, the DPW, everything that they did over the weekend. I know the weather's been hot. Traffic's been crazy and everything else that's going to go on this summer. Before you know it, it'll be fall and we'll be over the hump in a, in a minute. So I'm not trying to move it faster than it is, but summertime in a, in a, in a village that is found, as the mayor would say, we've been found. Well, we've been found. We've got musicians coming here and making videos. Kenny Chesney made a video here last year, which is cool. And, you know, good old, good old G-Town. So thank you, everybody, for this evening. Barry, if you need anything over the next couple of days, give me a call, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second.
All right, it's the move and seconded by everyone. All right, Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes, good night and good luck, Barry.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes, good night and good luck, Barry.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes, prayers are with you, Barry.
Counselor Pat? Looks like Barry's froze. Counselor, oh, there you go, Counsel Pat?
Yes, thank you all.
Counselor Cox?
No.
We lost, we lost Melissa.
Yes.
There you go. Counselor Gilman?
Yes, and good luck, Barry.
And Counsel Holmgren?
Yes, and good luck, Barry. You got this.
Yep, and Counsel LeBlanc, yes, and best wishes, Barry. Like I said, definitely reach out and I'll bring you five, a muffin, a coffee, a bag, whatever you need, pal. All right, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you all.
Good night.